...order for the Santa Barbara School Board for Friday, November 3rd. A special meeting for the single plan presentations from our elementary schools. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If anybody needs translation, we do have Mr. Michael Gonzalez available today to provide translation. Since there's nobody here, you probably don't need to do an introduction. Do you want to do an introduction anyways?
Only if, as your pleasure.
We probably don't need one, thank you. Okay. And we also have headsets available for the hearing impaired, if anybody needs that. Is there anybody here for public comment? I don't see anyone, so we will move on. And we will begin this morning's presentations. But before we do that, I want to point out that we've made a slight revision to our agenda in order to add item C1, which will be approval of all the, all of the single plans from the elementary schools that have presented after the presentation of these plans today. And also, just a quick reminder, we normally, often do introduce our candidates who are here. So Suzie Coffin is a candidate for the Santa Barbara School Board, as well as Bob Noel. Okay, we can, are ready to begin then. We'll begin with Cesar Chavez Charter School.
Let me ask Robin Sowoski to make some introductory comments. We're pleased this morning to be able to continue our presentations by elementary principals on single plans for student achievement. Robin Sowoski is our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education.
Okay, thank you. And Board members, I know this is a continuation of last week's presentation, so you all know about our new format and our school plan online and the executive summary. And so, we're just going to go forward with today's presentations. And we're starting with Cesar Chavez, our dual immersion school, and Principal Eva Nyer.
Thank you. Our school-wide focus areas this year, our primary focus is language arts. And at our school, that means English language arts and Spanish language arts, as well as the ELD, the Second Language, English Language Development Component, and Spanish language development for our students learning Spanish as a second language. We're having the teachers work more closely in cross-grade level teams this year to collaborate and to articulate so that what's learned in kinder, for example, isn't repeated at the beginning of first grade, so that the kids can move right along. And that's both for English and Spanish language arts. And it was a focus that we, as a staff, had chosen. And about a week ago, our independent evaluator spoke to our staff and to our School Governance Council, and that was also a focus she recommended, based on the data, that we do need to focus on our English language arts. As a school, math is a relative strength, if you look at test scores for our students. Continued area of focus at our school is parent involvement. As a charter school, we expect our parents to participate five hours a month, as a minimum. And fortunately for the families that have two or three kids, it's just five hours of family, not per child. We also recognize parent contribution of volunteer hours for parents who attend meetings, whether they are governance meetings or parent education meetings. Or parent education programs, such as our Padres Adelante, which are Friday evening meetings, because we know that we have a lot of working parents who are not able to make it during school hours. So that's what the teachers prefer, to have the parents there in the classroom. Third focus area at this time for us is facilities. We're very happy that the Board decided not to split our campus, and so we're looking forward to the facility's long-term master plan being finalized, being worked out, so that we really know we have a permanent home, and see how we're going to accommodate our student population. Because this year, we grew again. We're up to 218 students. We do maintain a waiting list, and the waiting list is larger in the primary grades, K2, from the past couple of years, less so in the upper grades. With having that waiting list, we really want our parents to make an informed choice. We, I meet with parents who are interested, and with incoming kindergarten enrollment, the parents tour the classrooms, and then they do an evening meeting with the kindergarten teachers, where the teachers lay out expectations like, "Your child will be learning in two languages." "We want you to be involved," and just so that they know that it's not a school where you just drop your kid in the morning, say goodbye, and leave your child there, and pick them up at the end of the day, that kind of thing. And let's see. So I have moved into our school profile, some of the highlights. It's something I'm very happy about. It says our Chavez is, "All of our teachers returned this year." So it's my third year as principal, and third year with the same teaching team, but we added a new teacher at third grade, and we added a Title I teacher tutor this year, who actually is fully credentialed, so that's something new. Previously, we didn't have a Title I teacher. We were spending those funds on AIDS to assist those kids. We have various classified staff. We have instructional assistants, K through six. The hours vary depending on the class size and the grade level, but each teacher does have assistants. And our office staff has been wonderful at revamping and taking on new duties this year, because I'm spending more time in the classroom. We also have, many of our staff members have their own children attending the school. And for me, that's always a sign of, if the school's good enough for your own child, then it's, you believe in that school. And it's another reason that makes our staff just more dedicated. They're working, not just for the community's children, but for their own children, too. We continue to collaborate with various community organizations. We have the Putting It Back After School program, provided by Endowment for Youth Committee, working with third and fourth graders this year. Poet Sojourner Ro is returned, and she, this is the third year that she comes in, and during the English Language Arts Block, works with the kids in writing their own poems. And as part of her work through the Eastside Library, she's actually tracking the CELT scores to see, are the kids who get this poetry time with her, are they showing some kind of advance in their English learning? We continue to collaborate in various ways with UCSB. We're running an after-school science club. The LEAP Science Club this year is adding a math component, because they found that as the children get older, often children have an interest in science, but if they haven't kept up their math skills, career-wise, college-wise, both, they really go hand-in-hand, math and science. So that's something a little bit different with our science club. We have various collaborations with Westmont, with Kama. A new one for us is with Crane School, which is a private school in Montecito. And our fourth grade teacher is partnering with a fourth grade teacher there. And yes, they're pen pals, but they're also going on some joint field trips and going to work on some joint art projects. And we have some ideas of maybe the teachers visiting and teaching the other class, just doing some fun things like that, to have our kids get to know another side of the Santa Barbara community, and vice versa for the students from Crane School. That's something new for us this year, as far as for collaboration in the community. And funding, I put down as a highlight, that we've had a few grant-writing successes this year, but it does take a lot of time. That as a charter school principal, I meet with our treasurer from our Governance Council and the council as a whole, to keep an eye on our budget and monitor that. We are using funds this year to put ourselves in compliance, finally, with the science textbooks. Previously, the K1 teachers have just been creating their own materials, and we had adopted texts, second graded up. So we've ordered K1. And with the new social sciences, social studies adoption, we're going to be ordering the K6 materials, too, school-wide. And I'm moving on now to number three on my executive summary, which is the overview of our data analysis. Our K1 oral J scores and our first and second grade scores on the developmental reading assessment, the DRA, shows that many of our students are becoming biliterate sooner than third grade. Usually, third grade in a bilingual school is considered the transition year, where formally, students are expected to read and write in both languages. And we're seeing that happen sooner. Some kids are leaving kindergarten already, reading, writing in the second language. First grade, a few more. And at the end of second grade last year, a full third of the students were already above grade level, both languages, on our informal assessment, the DRA. So that is a sign to us, and makes us feel really positive, that we will be able to meet our API, our AYP scores, coming in spring 2007. Our first full cohort of 40 students who were with us in K for second, they're in third grade now, and becoming even more bilingual, so they should score better on the California Standards Test. And then there's a new group of 40 in second grade. Our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade numbers are smaller from the early years of the school, when they didn't enroll as many students. Those kids are working their way up. So we'll have our second graduating class come June, our second group of sixth graders. Regarding test scores and analysis, I mentioned that our independent evaluator had spoken to our staff last week, and her formal written report should be arriving, actually, in the mail today. And so then I'll be sharing that with district staff and school board as well, where she has looked at CELT scores, SOLOM, the various assessments, excuse me, as well as standardized test scores. And she will be tracking our students long-term, looking at students who have been with us since K1, who will benefit more from the two-way immersion program, as well as comparing us to how kids at other two-way immersion schools do in the state, comparing us to district schools, too. And what she saw was, again, last year was her first year, and we had 107 students take the standardized, the STAR test. So it was our first, actually statistically valid group with 100 as the sample size. And she did see that second grade looked stronger as a group compared to our earlier cohorts, who are now in grades three through six. As we, as a staff, look at making our gains for AYP, we're paying particular attention to our English learners subgroup. Out of our 218 students, 144 of them are English learners. So more than half of our population are EL. And on the STAR test, that was our subgroup that had the least amount of students proficient. So that's something we're focusing on this year. When our teachers work to write the SMART goals, we did that in June, to write our goals for our school plan. Previously, it was something that we did in August, and teachers in August are wanting to get into the classroom, decorate their rooms, plan their lessons. And so, we did it last June as a way of reflecting on how your kids did at this grade level. What are your goals for next year? So at each grade level, the team wrote their goals, and then the site council reviewed those, asked questions, did some editing, some polishing, and added some things, which we then put into our school plan. Those three main goals we have written are for students to be reading and writing at grade level, looking at trimester benchmarks informally, and then looking at proficiency, meaning proficiency goals on the standardized tests. Our second goal area that we have written is for our English learners to increase one level on the CELT test, the English Language Development Test for California. And our third goal area of focus is the notion of sense of social justice, that our school is named after, Cesar Chavez, for a reason, that we want our students to know they can make a difference in the community, that they're important parts of the community, and for them to understand people of other backgrounds and respect, and get along with those people, all of them, at our school and in the larger community. To help the teachers, and actually, not just the teachers, but the principal and support staff, in improving our professional practice to meet these goals and increase the student achievement, some of our focuses this year are, teachers will be participating in the CELEST models, which the district is offering, modules three through six, the Center for Effective Leadership, Educational Leadership in Effective Schools. And as a principal, I'm attending the State Training SP430 that is designed for new principals. I'm in my third year, but I hadn't attended those trainings previously. And we continue to use early release Thursdays as our time for staff development and collaboration. We dismiss at 12 o'clock on Thursdays. Once a month, we have full staff meetings, issues such as behavior on the playground, and that affects our classified staff, as well as our teacher. And the other meetings during the month will be grade-level collaboration or teacher meetings for our Thursday meetings. And my final point that I put on my executive summary, number six, was to address school leadership. The main thing that I'm doing differently this year is, after attending the breakthrough training, I am spending a minimum of two, sometimes three days a week in the classroom. And I've, I'm using a monthly focus, as I go into the room and give feedback to the teachers. For example, in September, I actually tallied the minutes of direct instruction, when I would go into the classroom, our teacher spending, you know, X minutes on giving directions of how to do the assignment, X minutes to transition, and how many minutes where the teacher is actually teaching, that the kids are engaged in learning something from the teacher. For October, my focus to work with teachers on was, are the lessons really standards-based? Because, just because you note the standard and write it down, or it's hanging on the wall, the lesson may or may not be addressing that standard. For November, what I'll be looking at with the teachers is the students who scored as basic on the California Standards Test last year, what does their program look like? What is happening to them on a daily basis that can bump them up to proficiency? And I haven't determined my focuses yet for the rest of the year. We're in November now. But it's something that I'll work with, for the, with the teachers and with guidance from district staff. And I am ready for any questions. I haven't done a thorough enough job here, so please, questions.
Board members, do you have questions? I also want to point out that Ms. Rodriguez is not with us today, as she had a pressing project at work that she needed to take care of. So do board members have questions for Cesar Chavez School? Ms. Harder?
Just one big-ish question, which is, you indicated that you're using less of your Title I money on AIDS, and you've hired a Title I teacher, but there's no budget. There are no numbers connected with your single plan. So how are you spending the rest of your money?
Yes. When, the document I submitted to you was actually the draft plan. But our adopted budget, which was approved by our Governance Council, and then went through the process of being approved by the Board, you have seen. And I'm sorry, I neglected to put that in there with your packet, but I can flip to that right now.
If you could just get the broad strokes, would be helpful.
Okay. Yeah. Our Title I budget is around $40,000, and the majority of that is going on the Title I teacher's salary, but also for after-school homework assistance.
Okay.
We have less categorical funds as a charter. They're lumped in as a block grant. It's different than the regular schools.
That was my one, my one big question.
You mentioned, you mentioned the independent evaluator. And I'm just, I, maybe I missed that. Who exactly was this, what spurred it on?
Her name is Dr. Catherine Lindholm-Leary. She's a professor in San Jose, and she actually is a nationally-known researcher in the field of two-way immersion. She's authored books and various research studies. And so, she's able to compare our program to other two-way immersion schools. Our Governance Council contract with her last year was the first year, and so I collected all the data, sent it off during the summer. She's been crunching numbers and synthesized it into a report, which I should be getting the printed report any day now, and that will be available for your review.
Dr. Noel, did you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you for coming. What do you make of these subgroup test score numbers?
What I make of them is that we need to prepare our kids better, because I believe the two-way immersion program is a viable program. I know that we have a very good teaching staff. And so, what I make of them is that we haven't quite figured out everything we need to do as a school, to get our kids ready to show what they know on the test.
Well, I'm looking at Latino achievement in English language arts, for examples. Starting off in 2003, '04, you cleared that hurdle at that time. Of course, the hurdle was lower. The hurdle went up in 2004, '05, and your, and the Latino English language arts scores went down. So they didn't, I mean, the hurdle went up and, so, okay. And the same thing, and they continued to go down into 2005 and 2006, while the, the bar was still at 24.4 percent, only 12.9 percent of the, of the students, of the Latino students. Am I reading this correctly?
Yes. And so, when I look at that, what I consider in analyzing it is, in 2003, there were about 34 kids that took the test. In '04, '05, it was 68. And so, those numbers are less reliable for tracking school-wide progress. Last year's number, the 12.9 percent Latino scoring as proficient, was the first year we had more than 100 students take that test. So for me, those are the numbers that are more valuable, almost a starting point to decide, is this program helping kids increase their skill, increase their academic achievement? Those, the numbers from '03, '04, and '04, '05 are less reliable, just because of the small sample size. And so...
I'm, I'm not terribly concerned with statistical niceties. I'm just looking at the, at the AYP requirement and how far you are from it, and the trend. The trend is as disturbing as the low level, that because they've gone down. And then I look, and you can just, I just have, want to get a clarification of a number of points. I see for socio, the socio-economically disadvantaged subgroup in ELA, there's a blank cell in '05, '06. Does that mean that there are too few?
No, it means there was an error in the data, because our whole school is under the provision two, where the whole school eats for free, our lunch. They were not coded correctly.
Okay.
That should be a significant subgroup. The numbers just weren't available yet.
Okay. So there's no data for that.
Right.
And the English, okay, then, would that also be true? Yes, it would be then, in math also. That explains those empty cells.
Right.
Okay. And you've got, so, so your, next year could put you in the PI?
Yes, that is correct, and I...
And in order to avoid that, you've got to get each one of these subgroups, for example, you've got to bring the Latino subgroup and English language arts up from 12.9 percent proficient to 24.4 percent.
Yes.
In one year. You've got to bring English learners in English language arts up three points, from 3.7 percent to 24.4 percent. You've got to bring the Latinos, the Latinos made it in math. That's certainly hopeful. And the English learners are better in math, but they still have to come up some 6 percent. Now, what I'm trying to understand is, as I look at this, I don't see, I don't see a plan with money attached, specific things that you're going to do, with a rationale of how you're going to move from, close those very large gaps in one year. And that's a matter of great concern. That's one question. I'll let you respond to that before I ask my next question. Or maybe that's just a statement, isn't it? Okay, I'll make, I'll ask you another question. I'm also concerned about the ethnic makeup of the school. In it, in the original plan, the original vision for the school, it was going to be a dual-language immersion school, and having, and maintaining something like parity in terms of native language speakers, ethnic groups, was a goal of the school. And indeed, considered an integral part of the design of the academic program. And students were going to be half of the day in English, half of the day in Spanish, with, as a language of instruction and so on. Maybe you could clarify all that for me a little bit, in a few years. But I, but I do recall in those early discussions, and in the charter discussions, a great concern with maintaining something like parity. And that, and I recall comments, I think it was by, by the people who were advancing the petition, that maintaining parity was essential to the model itself. And I just wondered how you addressed that. Because it's becoming basically an 88 percent Latino and 11 percent white school, I think is a long way from what I thought the initial vision of the school was.
Okay. So with the two-way immersion, the important thing for the 50-50 model is a language dominance, not a racial component, not an ethnic breakdown. So we have, the majority of our students are Latino. However, just because they're Latino, doesn't mean they know Spanish, or that they're Spanish dominant. So we have students, half of them learning to read and write in English first, half learning to read and write in Spanish first. So of those students who are English dominant, some of them come from a bilingual home, and on paper, they will be English learner. They come in at four and a half years old. The Home Language Survey says there's a language other than English at home, so they're given the CELT test. And this is before they've even gotten to know the school and the teachers at the start of the year. And so, some of the kids are just more shy and don't produce the language. So they're on paper as English learner for several years then, when they're actually English dominant and have a little bit of Spanish background. However, I would like to tell you that in K2, we actually have more numbers of English-only students than the 4, 5, 6. So the early years of the school, they tended to enroll more students who were already bilingual, who came in as IFEP, initially fluent English proficient. And at this point in kindergarten, we have about 10 students out of the 40 that are English-only. They, that's all the family speaks, English dominant. Some of them are Latino, some of them are Anglo. Likewise, in first grade and second grade, it's around, it's around 10 English-only, whereas in fourth, fifth, or sixth grade, there are mainly two kids that are English-only. So actually, more recently, we have drawn families that are English-only, more than they did in the early years of the school. So have I, have I addressed that part, as far as for the parity and the balance of the program, 50-50?
Are you reciting those numbers out of your head? Because I didn't see them.
They're, yeah, they're out of my head, just because we finished the CELT test, and so I have all the English-only EL numbers in my head. We just finished that test window.
Well, it might be something that you'd want to include in future reports, if that's a key factor. Because one, it's very hard to know how the school is proceeding according to that model without those kind of data.
And those numbers may be in the independent evaluator's report. If not, I could add something to it.
So what's your plan for getting, what's your plan for getting English language learners from 3.7 percent proficient in '05, '06 to 24.4 percent proficient in the current year?
The plan is to do the things that I've mentioned, that we're doing differently this year, as far as for focusing on those English learners who scored as basic last year, that we know they've been English dominant all along. They may just need better test preparation skills. They may need the extra tutoring from the Title I teacher. And so, focusing on those kids, as well as our kids who are below basic or far below, and not forgetting our kids who are already proficient. So it's paying attention to the students, it's articulating better from grade level to grade level, the ELD program, the English Language Arts Program. And it's having our teachers attend professional development, the entire staff with the CELEST sessions, rather than just a few members as representatives. So all of the things that I talked about, there were changes this year, fall under one of our focus areas of English learners. Knowing that 3.7, that is too low of a percentage of our kids. We know we have students who've been in English language arts all along, who are EL, that will be able to score as proficient.
You didn't mention anything about assessment, and one is almost become a mantra now in K-12, right? Continuous monitoring, frequent assessment. What are your plans for assessment, particularly focusing on these English learner groups?
We have...
Assessment, feedback, what do you call it?
Yeah.
I keep thinking of a D I, R I T, R T I.
Oh, oh. Response to the issue.
Yeah. I mean, is there something analogous to that, that, so that gives me a sense of a dynamic, that one is frequently assessing, diagnosing, intervening, looking at the response to the intervention, reassessing, and it's a, I see that as a cyclical process that presumably spirals the kid up.
Yes, we have...
I don't see anything about that in here.
We have trimester assessments in reading. K2 is first language reading, and third grade and up, it's how they're reading in first and second language. The, the teachers have students read a passage. It's the DRA, developmental reading assessment. Where, and I collect those as the principal and track school-wide how we're doing, grade level, above grade level. It's a nationally-used informal assessment that teachers give.
Is it aligned with the California Standards Test?
No, that assessment is not.
That is a problem, isn't it?
I don't see it as a problem because it helps them with their instruction.
Three point seven percent is a number derived from the California Standards Test. That's the ultimate hurdle. I would think that your assessments would be thoroughly and fully aligned every step of the way.
The, the assessment is an informal assessment that measures reading accuracy, reading comprehension, reading fluency. So in a way, yes, it's aligned with standards for the grade level, but the format is not the same as the California Standards Test. So in that sense, it's not aligned with exact questions from the test.
I mean, I should have said aligned with the standards.
Then, yes, it is based on grade level expectations. And so we can look at students who are performing at grade level on that informal assessment. And what I believe for our school, what we need to close this, this gap from three point seven to twenty-four point four for our English learners is having our kids know the format, have the rehearsal of taking the standards test where they have to sit and work independently for long sessions, having what we've seen them do informally, that they can read and write, preparing them to show that on the standards test, the format of the standards test. So that's something that the teachers are working on this year.
So, so you think that spending your forty thousand Title One for a teacher and some after-school things, and what were some of the other ways that you were planning to spend? What other, you mentioned Title One. What other, you have the IALEP money?
No, we don't. As a charter school, is funded into a block grant. We get the block grant.
What's your block grant, right from Title One? How much money you got?
The, the, the Title One amount is around forty thousand. For example, we don't get SIP funds. We don't have school improvement funds.
Oh, I thought the four O was that kind of.
That is.
That is.
That's it, that's it, that's the whole.
Well, we have Title Two funds of about six thousand dollars. So we have our new teachers participating in the BITSA, with mentoring from an experienced veteran teacher. We have a little bit of technology money, it's about six hundred dollars. And Title Five, about three hundred dollars. And Title Three money, we have aides in, in all classrooms, assisting teachers.
So you don't have a lot of money to throw at this problem, do you?
Um, not a lot of categorical money, but for our unrestricted funds are also being used to remedy the problem, if you will. What you see in the school plan are for the categorical uses, but with our fully adopted budget that shows all our, our categoricals and our general purpose revenues, that's also been reviewed by the school board. And so that's a, actually a better picture, a better way to look at how we're spending our money.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much.
I just have one more question. I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Dr. Noel was talking about formative assessments, using your formative assessments over the course of the year, so that you have a really good idea of where you're headed when you get to your spring exams. But I would think, I would, I, I would think that the advantage of a small school is that when you get your results in August, that you're more able, or it's easier than if it's a five-hundred-student school, to really be able to tear apart your data and to be able to, you know, make those test results from the California Standards Test a more useful guide for your school year. And then be constantly reassessing with the, with the formative assessments that, you know, you've got a regular blueprint going. Do you make that kind of effort to tear apart the, the data?
Yes, most definitely. And the, Davis Hayden has been very helpful in reporting data in various formats that then the teachers and I can look at, rather than just using the reports that, that come from the state. And so we're able to look, is there a trend as a grade level, as a classroom, where kids are low? And also definitely the small school benefit is knowing the individuals, how I was able to, you know, out of my head, tell you how many kids are EL. I could actually give you the names, and I can give you the names of who was far below. And because I'm able to track, track individuals with having a smaller population. So it is a benefit of a small school.
Okay, I also had a couple of questions. Thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation. And also, thank you for clarifying, because I think it's important for people to understand the, the danger we might make in assuming language background based on ethnicity. Because I think, as one of the people who helped start the school, I know that the, the, the program is based on, the philosophy is based on language background and not, as you pointed out, not necessarily ethnicity, although certainly that's a, a challenge and an interest. And I think that, as you pointed out, the, the younger grades are doing a, a really good job of, of trying to bring in a little bit more balance there. But I do have some questions about the interventions, the specific interventions that you plan to use, because in, in reading through the, the packet and also in listening to you today, it, I have the sense that a lot of the emphasis is being placed on teach, sort of test readiness for students in terms of making sure that students are understanding the process of taking the test and, and having maybe the practice in doing the kinds of activities that they will be required to do on the test. And I'm wondering if that's going to be enough? If, if it's your feeling that the students really have the, the knowledge and have the skills and are already basically learning what they need to learn, and it's just a matter of learning how to transfer that to a testing situation? Or are there specific interventions that you need to do in order to bring up the students' learning and their skill level?
I think for some individual students, there are interventions. And that's the, where we track the kids, the, you know, individual case-by-case basis. As a school, when I've talked about getting kids ready for the test format, that's because that's something I think we didn't do enough of in the past. And so as I think about, okay, what were we not doing last year that we should add on this year? And so I spoke more to the things that we're adding on. But it doesn't mean we've dropped all the things we've done in the past as far as for implementing the two-way immersion program solidly, having kids be strongest in their dominant language first, before we focus on the second language. So those things are all still there.
Could you, could you maybe talk a little bit more about those specific interventions that you use with the students?
With, with interventions for.
For.
For school-wide, as we're looking at individuals, or just what we have?
Yeah, individually, and especially in, in English Language Arts.
So we have, at different grade levels, teachers regrouping, using the aides, but rather than have the aide working, the instructional assistant work with the students who need the most help, or the students, we have the teacher, who is the credentialed person who has more knowledge of instruction, working with those kids who need the best teaching. And the aide gets, you know, the, the top Spanish group, where someone else has the, the English learners, and that someone else is, is the credentialed teacher. We have the K-two teachers working with flexible groups of students. So sometimes it's whole-class instruction, sometimes it's, it's small-group reading instruction, and sometimes it's individual intervention, one-on-one. Using technology, having kids write their own stories, print them, read them back out. So just a variety of teaching strategies, not just traditional teaching, not just using our adopted Hote-Mifflin program, but also using a variety of materials to support kids in their literacy. I, I feel like I could go on and on and on to answer that one.
No, I appreciate, I, I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Oh, and I think I neglected to say that the Title One teacher, she is working with first and second grade and also kindergarten. Again, looking at catching kids up early, before, you know, before they're so far behind, that then it's a longer gap.
Could I note for the board that at our next board meeting, November fourteen, we will be reviewing the MOU with Cesar Chavez? Now, that's not the charter review, but the MOU has our contractual agreement with the charter school and includes, in this case, the assessment plan. That's not normally the case in, in charter schools. But it'll be the assessment plan, facilities agreement, et cetera.
And when, 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 may I ask, will the charter be up for renewal?
It won't be up for renewal for a number of years.
It would be October two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine.
Well, I, I had a footnote kind of question. If these numbers, if these numbers continued to be anything like they've been the last two, three years, at some point, would you ever come to question the underlying assumptions and model that you're operating on?
If the numbers for spring oh seven drop, I will question what we are doing. I don't see those earlier numbers as a trend because of the small numbers of kids testing and knowing that there were a few special ed kids. And if you're only testing thirty kids, and there are some students with learning disabilities, it can skew the numbers. So let's talk after we see the spring two thousand and seven.
Sorry, what?
I would say let's talk after we take the test in two thousand and seven. I would be concerned if we see a drop from oh six to oh seven. But those earlier numbers, to me, are less, less important.
Because I'm, come from a tradition of listening to data.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so you know.
And I hear a lot of rationales and rationalizations about data. And I'm wondering, you know, it's a question all of us, I think, will have to ask in, in anything we do, or there are data. At some point, when do the data get, get a big message across that we may not want to hear?
The sample size is now over one hundred, so it's a very important message that the data give us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on then. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will move on to Adams Elementary School.
Okay, and Matt Sikowitz is here to present the plan for Adams.
Good morning. It's great to be here to talk about all the wonderful things that are happening at Adams School. And I want to just remind everybody to, to please keep in mind, as you read through this, our plan, that it is very much a work in progress as we're constantly monitoring and evaluating and shifting and changing as we get new information about how to best serve our students. I'll just go through the executive summary. We continue to hold our enrollment steady. Unlike some other schools, we, we are a school that, that folks are choosing to come to, and we're excited about that. We have two primary school-wide focus goals. The English language development, of course, is very important for our school, given our numbers, because we have fifty-seven percent English learner students. So it's very important that we focus on the English language instruction and English language development. And then the other area of focus is technology literacy, which is very important, particularly in this day and age. I had an experience recently when I was at the grocery store, and I heard a, a gentleman applying for a job. And he said, I want to fill out a form. And the manager said, oh, we don't have any forms. It's all online now. And so it made me reflect on the fact that if students don't have an opportunity to use technology, they will not even be able to access jobs or apply for jobs and those type of things. So again, it's very, it's very important. Our, moving on to our school profile, we have had a tradition of having an English learner focus. We continue having parents in our C-BET classes that are taught by City College Adult Education. And we accompany that with a homework tutorial where the students of the, I'm sorry, the children of the adult education students are there and receive help from credentialed teachers. And so that's a wonderful opportunity because we're seeing even younger parents, kindergarten parents coming to the school and learning English so they can best help their students. We continue to focus on technology literacy. We have kindergarten that goes every week to our school lab, and I'll talk about a lab in a second. And then the other students continue going on a regular basis. And our fifth and sixth graders continue with their keyboarding classes and are able to keyboard up to thirty-five words a minute by the time that they leave us in sixth grade. I did make a point of putting in our school profile highlight about our business partnerships, because as you know, we've celebrated many years, in particular, with our Santa Barbara Northside Rotary, as well as our other numerous business partners who really help our school and provide students opportunity that they wouldn't have otherwise. As far as barriers are concerned, we continue to have a high percentage of economically disadvantaged students. Based on the numbers last year, we have seventy percent of those students that are economically disadvantaged. As I mentioned earlier, we have fifty-seven percent of students that are English learners. And those are, those are challenges that we, that we readily embrace and that we work on to ensure that all those students achieve at the highest levels. Now, as far as particular actions on how we're going to address those barriers, through the district leadership, we are implementing a systematic English language development program where students are leveled and are going to be taught at their particular level of English language development. And that will be assessed on a regular basis. In fact, I'm collecting data now from the teachers as far as where they are in every critical standard. And we're going to monitor that closely to make sure that those students are making progress. Additionally, we continue to hire reading tutors and aides to hi, to lower the adult-to-student ratio in classes and so that students can receive more individualized instruction. We also are continuing with the upper-grade rotation, which is set up as a mini junior high school. And you're familiar with the program, where we are paying for additional teachers that lower class sizes and also provide exploratory experiences for the teachers. And in particular, the lower class sizes are for the students that are far below basic and basic, so that they really receive intensive support. We also are continuing with our computer lab technician, who provides students access to technology, and especially for students that come from a lower socioeconomic status, that would not otherwise have access to those experiences with technology. Turning quickly to our data, we were thrilled that we met all of our adequate yearly progress goals. Every subgroup, except for one, made gains across the, across, across the AYP goals. Our English learners rose to twenty-six point six, so that we were able to meet our adequate yearly progress, and we're, we're very thrilled to see that. And that's a significant gain of six percent from the, from the previous year. And we credit that to the fact that we began to really focus on English learners, or really narrow the focus on them, by doing, using a lot of front-loading techniques and, and those type of things. And that really helped. As far as our API is concerned, we exceed our API growth target, increasing to seven forty-six. And while the overall growth was by four, our Hispanic subgroup rose by twenty-two points. And our Latino, I'm sorry, and our socio-economic disadvantaged students rose by fifteen points. So we're really excited about that. Even though we, the overall was an increase by four points, our subgroups made significant gains. As far as the particular goals are concerned, we would like English language students to demonstrate academic achievement in language arts. As I mentioned, we are front-loading the pre-teach concepts for students. We will be implementing, and have already begun to implement, the systematic ELD instruction that will level students according to their, the English language development level. And as I mentioned earlier, the students are, their progress is monitored and reported to the district on a regular basis. As far as access to technology on a regular basis, I mentioned our new computer lab, which we've discussed before, which is through the funding from QAD for Project Upgrade. And that is a new state-of-the-art lab. We, we were thrilled to have that, the presentation when we shared that. And our categorical funds pay for the lab technician, as well as professional development for the teachers to be able to instruct with technology. As far as our professional development plan, we are participating in the systematic, all of our staff went to the systematic ELD training at the beginning of the year through the district. And we have some teachers that are participating in the current Susana Dutro trainings. We are participating in the CELT training that was referred to by Cesar Chavez earlier. And we will be providing technology and services to staff in our new computer lab. As far as the school leadership is concerned, I also found the breakthrough training very helpful as far as spending time in the classrooms. And I make a point of combining that with the walkthrough training, as far as being able to go into a classroom and quickly looking to see what the focus of the lesson is and how the students are being instructed. I also meet with grade levels on a regular basis. And we also meet as a leadership team once a month to look at student achievement. Now, I want to focus on the four goals that we have. And we're really looking at increasing the proficiency of students that are proficient or advanced in the English Language Arts. And overall, we're looking for a five percent increase. Our students, school-wide, were at thirty-seven point five. And we're looking at increasing that to forty-two point five. And we're really looking at increasing the English language learner's achievement by ten percent, from twenty-six point six to thirty-six point six. And again, we're going to do that through the systematic English language development, as well as through front-loading and the leveling that we've done with our students. The math achievement, we, we have, our math scores continue to hold steady. And school-wide, we're looking at making a five percent increase, and as well as through all of our different subgroups. We also have a goal of increasing attendance, which is part of the, the board focus goals, just to enhance revenue and also to decrease discipline referrals, so that I'm able to have more time to be in the classroom and monitoring really the instruction that's happening. Now, I know that you are curious about where the particular categorical funds are going and what they're being used for. So I was going to go through and just let you know roughly what the big. roughly what the big expenses are with the categorical funds. Under the goal of increasing achievement, school-wide, of students that are proficient or advanced in English language arts by 5%, we are paying for first-grade reading tutors, and we're paying for that out of Title I monies and also out of school library grant monies. We also are paying for instructional assistance, using Title III monies for our kindergarten aides, and supplementing that with Title I funds as well, so that we're able to meet all of their salaries. The computer lab technician, who we're using, is also paid for out of our school library grant, as well as our Title I grant. We also have two AmeriCorps volunteers that are promoting literacy. We have one that's working with our kindergarten students, with the students that really need the support, as well as she also spends some time in our newcomer class, and also with our sixth-grade lowest group that needs additional support. And the main, it's a contract to work with those students to promote literacy, and we're paying for that out of our school library block grant. And the other piece that one of our AmeriCorps volunteers does is that he works, we have a half-an-hour discrepancy between our primary release time and our upper-grade release time, and those students go to a homework center that's staffed by a credential teacher. And at the beginning of the year, there was over 22 students that were in that classroom, and so we assigned the AmeriCorps volunteer to also help with those students that really need help with literacy. The other big expense that we have are the additional credentialed staff that make our upper rotation work, so that the students can be leveled in three different teams across the grade levels. So there's a team that is at the lower level, at a mid-level, then at the highest gate level. In order to do that, we have to hire additional staff, and we're paying for that out of EIA monies, Title I monies, and then, EIA monies and Title I monies for the English language arts. And then I'll talk about the math in just a second. We also are paying for our library books out of our school library grant, because that's one of the requirements of the grant, is to spend a certain amount of funding on library books for our school library. As far as the staff development and professional collaboration, we've set aside Title II monies to do that, and the focus is going to be on English language development, as well as technology literacy, which is in line with our two board focus goals. Now, as far as increasing English language learner's achievement by 10%, and we also want to increase the self-proficiency levels by one level on the self, one of the things that we continue to do is to fund for the newcomer program, and those are, some of you are familiar with that program and have come on our site and visited, and have seen that those are the students that have recently come into the country, and those students are then mainstreamed into regular classrooms, particularly in the upper grades, and as well as the other things that we do for just English language arts in general. But we're really going to focus on the ELD this year with the leveled English language development at all the grade levels. Another goal that we have is to increase our math achievement by 5%, and one of the things that we do is we pay for an additional credentialed staff for the upper grade rotation, and it pays for a fourth-grade math teacher who, I did an observation yesterday, she's an incredible teacher, just doing wonderful things with the students, and this allows us to reduce the class sizes, so they're smaller class sizes, so they can really target the instructional level of every student. I already talked about the lab technician who's also doing mathematics, there's mathematics software that's being used in that laboratory. And that is, we're paying for her salary out of EIA funds for the salary and benefits. As far as the increasing the attendance and decreasing the discipline referrals, there's two main expenses that we have. One is the Healthy Start Family Advocate that you're probably familiar with, and she works very closely with our neediest parents, and we're paying for that out of our Title I, the parent involvement. As you know, there's 1% of funding that needs to be spent on Title I, and so that 1% is being spent to pay for the contract with Healthy Start, and then we're also using EIA funds to pay for that. Also, we have two school-based counselors on our site. We have a Medi-Cal counselor that works with Medi-Cal students and who are eligible for Medi-Cal, and then we have a full-time equivalent that's split between two positions of a non-Medi-Cal counselor that works with non-Medi-Cal students. And that's paid for out of a Title I grant, and, I'm sorry, out of Title I funds, and then the school library block grant, and that is a contract for services with Healthy Start. I think this gives you a snapshot view of how categorical funds are being spent, just so you can see what's happening at our school. And I believe we're spending the allocations wisely, and we're ensuring that the intended students receive the services. You'll notice that certain positions are multi-funded because they do hit students from across different categories. And I would invite you all to come to Adams when you have an opportunity to see the wonderful programs that we have, and we have such an incredible, dedicated staff. It's such a pleasure to walk into the classrooms, and I'm always very comfortable whenever visitors come on campus to walk into any classroom because you'll see great instruction happening. Unless you have any other particular questions, that would bring me to the conclusion of our single plan, so I'm sure that you have a number of questions.
You know as well.
Actually, I thought that was very deft. I thought maybe you were going to just like segue out of the question.
Yeah, exactly. With that, I'll just pass the mic over to you.
Okay, board members.
Do you want to go?
Your math scores are, have really risen among your Latino students, especially your English learners. I mean, if you look at, it's quite a remarkable rise. Anything in particular that you attribute that to?
You know, we do, there's a couple of things that we attribute that to. One is, as I mentioned earlier, that we really focused last year on front-loading and making sure that the students had an opportunity to use vocabulary and really understand the concepts, and so the teachers made a point of making sure that students had an opportunity to use that vocabulary on a regular basis. So in particular, that, those scores, one of the things that that's attributed to is that our third-grade scores went up significantly, and our third grade made a real strong point of using the front-loading techniques to ensure that the students understood the vocabulary, and that really helped the math scores because they really understood the vocabulary concepts and the key ideas behind that.
It certainly is closing the achievement gap.
We're really-
That diagram, it shows it very graphically.
Yeah, we're really working on doing that, in particular with the English learners, as I pointed out, and as far as the, and really all of our students are going forward. And one of the things as well that we attribute that to is the fact that we have what we call the Mighty Math Stars. And a Mighty Master, it's one of the basic, the students have a mad minute, which in one minute, they have to learn their math facts, and there's different facts at different levels, and students are able to move beyond it. So if a first-grade student has already learned all of their addition facts to 18, they will move on to the subtraction, and then if they get that, they can move on to multiplication and then to division, and so we ensure that we move the students forward.
Basically, that's mastery, mastery math?
It's mastery math, it's sort of like mastery math, but the idea is just that they really understand the basic math facts, and then we've also added a problem-solving component last year where students were given, everybody's given the same problem to ensure that they're also being taught not only basic math, but problem-solving ability as well.
Is there any kind of spiraling, like in the Saxon program? Each new level, there's always a little bit of review of the previous level?
Well, we do use our adopted materials, so in that effect, it really is spiraling and moving up. And last year was also the first year that we had, that all of our grade levels had the adopted materials and were able to use them, so that, I think, was also really helpful.
You mentioned attendance, that you're trying to improve attendance, and I'm just curious if you could be more specific. What exactly are you doing?
Sure. One of the things that we're doing is, every month at our spirit assemblies, which actually we have this afternoon, we go through and give awards to the classroom that has the highest attendance, and then we also reward students who have perfect attendance at the end of the year. And at every assembly, every opportunity that I have to address the students, I always ask them, "What's the most important thing about school?" And their response is, "To be at school," because I always say, because if you're not at school, you can't move forward and do different things, so we really promote that.
That's great. I just happened to notice a discrepancy between the number of white students that are in the C-Beds and the number of white students taking the test, and maybe that's true of other schools as well. I don't know if there's some discrepancies here, but I'm just curious, is there anything particular that's happening, or is that just something-
Is that simply because the tests are from grades two through six?
Yeah.
Instead of kindergarten, first grade as well?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't include-
Does that fit that discrepancy?
It does.
Yeah.
Almost 12% versus 18%.
Okay, good.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Chavez.
So that means, then, that there are lower percentages of students in the lower grades? Is that what's going on? White students? All right, I have to look at it again, I guess. Thank you. I think that's my questions.
Okay.
When we take a break, I'll take a look at what you're looking at to make sure we can explain that.
Yeah.
I actually want to thank you for a very thorough presentation, and I appreciate the outlining of how the various categoricals are spent, because that is one of the things that we typically focus on in these presentations, and it's very helpful when you highlight those for us, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a quick question regarding the GATE participation.
Yes.
And you can probably anticipate my question. I noticed that in your numbers that were listed, that the Latino participation actually dropped slightly as the white participation increased dramatically. And I was wondering if you have any-
Well, actually, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wondered if you could explain that or why there would be such a dramatic increase in one group and that isn't reflected in the other group as well.
Yeah, and actually, if you look at it, it is a dramatic increase percentage-wise, but number-wise, it isn't. The number of white students didn't change, it actually dropped.
Declining enrollment?
It has to do with the overall numbers. We didn't actually have a declining enrollment between those two years, but one of the things that is happening, one of the things that we've discussed, is the need to look at how students are identified for the GATE test and what criteria is being used for that, because we, one of the, one of the criteria is language-based, and there are English language learners who are very bright that are not qualifying for the particular GATE test that we have, and so we're looking at what we can do to ensure that those students are identified correctly. Because that, we, I mean, I personally share that concern as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Bob? Is Dr. Noah? Oh.
Please, Mrs. R.
A couple of questions for you, Mr. Zukwitz, and some for the district office, but I am really, I share the value of the upper elementary specialization program that you have, of using teachers as specialists in the upper elementary grades. I think it's really critical, and I think it's, it's a very critical factor in moving students forward, particularly in preparing them for junior high. And I realize it's more context, student context for the teacher, but presumably less preparation if they're only teaching math, they're only teaching science. And I know that you emphasize that it's an opportunity to lower class size, but I think the fact that you're creating that specialization effort is in and of itself a great goal, not just the opportunity to lower class size.
Okay.
I mean, I think over and over again, studies have shown that upper elementary specialization pays big dividends for students when teachers develop that kind of expertise, and then students are able to benefit from that depth of expertise that the teacher has acquired. So, I wanted to make that one comment. Question for district, and that, it has to do with just the overall budget issue. I mean, really what we're all about, right, in going through the single plans, is aligning budget with goals for student achievement. And I know that there have been issues over site allocations, carryovers, and then coming back in the fall, and maybe the carryover really isn't there. What are we going to do at the district level to prevent that from happening? I mean, it's not just, it's not just an elementary-
I'll start.
I'm not picking on Ms. Swawsky. It's not just an elementary issue, it's a secondary issue.
Oh, no. It's a system issue.
Principals are asked to come and put these plans together, they're asked to present them in front of the public, and very often, they're on a little bit of quicksand when they're presenting the numbers to us, the budget numbers.
Yeah, that's, yes, there's a system issue, and there's also a calendar timing issue with the single school plans.
Okay, see, I'm not aware of that, so good.
Well, for instance, we decided last year as a district that we would have two times that we gave out numbers in the allocations, and we didn't follow that exactly. And the reason we decided to make that kind of two-time-a-year allocation was that last year, there were probably five or six times that principals got different allocation numbers. Not huge differences, but significant enough that it was interesting to conduct site council meetings and other such events at school without having the, you know, the exact knowledge of numbers. And that was a problem at the district office and just figuring out the system here. Unfortunately, the principals had to work with their teachers and their site councils with that. So we came to an understanding that when we get the CONAP numbers in, that's around January, that by February, March at the latest, we would have initial allocations to begin planning for the following year. And then we would not have another set of numbers until October, when the books are closed and we have carryover figures. What happened this year is that there was, with the shift in the business office with Mary Stark leaving, there was some miscommunication, I'll call it, between whether the sites were going to be able to have their carryover funds or not, and in the meantime, our staff met with principals. Principals worked really hard to get their budgets in place and know what carryover funding they had, and then some people put it forward in their new budget, and in some cases, that was staffing decisions, and that you can't just take back quickly. And as it turned out, and you know our budget, in order to get our budget to a place where together we were at 3%, carryover not just from the sites, but actually a huge bulk from the district level, was put into covering that and balancing the budget for us. So, again, much to our dismay, we had another situation that it wasn't exactly what principals had planned on. So we are determined now to have it put in place. We're working, you know, very closely, Bob Wolf, Director of Fiscal Services, and Patty and Shirley that work with him. We've all met and decided, you know, again, what we're going to work with, how we're going to present funding to the principals, and the principals have been in this communication too, as far as deciding when this will happen. And then we now have Ed Diaz, that's come on as our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, and he has a clear picture of program runs the show, that we have, I mean, we work together, but that the business department supports the principals and the programs at the sites and works it out so that they can do their business the way they should. And I can tell Brian was-
Well, the way you asked that question sounded very much like Jan Zettl and Robin Swawsky asking the question, because it has been a problem, and therefore, I met with Ed Diaz just yesterday, his second day on the job, to point that out and make that clear that we needed that consistency. Nevertheless, we will always have the problem of having an estimated number in the spring. We will start the year with an estimated number and not know the final number until about this time of the year, every year. So that'll be an ongoing problem, and I know there's always an effort to postpone the single-plan presentations, but the fact is that we're two months into the year, and we've already started the year with certain activities in place, and we can well report those activities to the board by now.
And I realize we only have half the principals here, and it really involves all of the elementary principals, but if that's the case, then are all of our principals going to go back to their site councils in November, or December, or January and say, "We made a plan, we all signed off in October, but I don't have the finances to support this particular piece of the plan that we put together, so we're going to have to make changes."
Please let me add a little bit to that as well. Part of the categorical funding process is that those funds are generated by the students in the year in which they are allocated. Well, I mean, you kind of get it afterward, you get it in January, but you get, you have that money. It really is to be spent down that year for those kids. And last year was the first, last year that we said, "Okay, we know we have carryovers, we've been busy trying to spend those carryovers." I mean, that sounds kind of silly, but in some cases, particularly with Title II professional development, that kind of thing, those- those funds, not so much at the elementary level, but have been sitting at sites not being used. So we had a huge district effort to spend those funds. And so I don't believe this is going to be a big issue from now on because all of the principals, we're talking about this constantly, how do we use the funds this year for these kids? So the carryover issue will not be a big deal after this year. We're really working at spending those funds. And then back to the timing around the single plans, with the online plan process now or the software and the way we've all kind of started addressing our plans, they're ongoing all the time. The ones that you saw last week presented, they're probably slightly different by now. And when you go online and look at the budget, you see the changes constantly with the allocation. You know, the plan is the same, but it's revised. And as data comes in, as we get more proficient at using formative data, we may slightly change activities. We're not going to wait till the end of the year when we know in December something's not working. So they're ongoing and changing. So we may very well, you know, kind of change this process when we present. And maybe the presentation won't be such a big deal either because it can be a matter of ongoing kind of updates on how the plan is going. That's what I'd like to start working toward, where it keeps you informed more often and it's more timely and it's more accurate.
Is there, I mean, I'm not, you don't have to name particular schools, but are any schools, are any elementary schools going to have to make adjustments based on the perception that they had more carryover that they don't have?
At this point, I think changes, for the most part, as far as I know, have either been made or they're figuring it out right now and adjusting and making sure that their plans are going to work, that what they have planned for students and to increase achievement, we're going to find the ways to make it be in place.
Okay. Other question for district administrators. We are going to start getting monthly reports on suspensions and expulsions in the secondary schools and expulsions aren't an issue for elementary schools. But would it be helpful, I mean, we've talked about this with the last group of principals, would it be helpful to get suspensions or some kind of discipline referral numbers? Another, single plan Roosevelt talks about attendance issues and, you know, using SARB. Would it be helpful to get those kinds of numbers? I mean, as I said before, I think when there's an awareness at the board level, you know, very often, plans can be formed on a more global level to try and address those kinds of issues.
That would be an easy thing to do. I get all of the suspension forms come through my office. I look at them, review them. Often I'm involved if it's a, you know, any kind of thing that's out of the ordinary. So we could easily generate monthly through my office a report on that and we could address the attendance as well. We could give an ongoing kind of attendance account because that's another goal and it kind of works together around the climate.
And I have no solution right now. It's just that maybe if we start seeing the numbers on a regular basis, you know, something starts to percolate up in terms of trends or...
Right, I could do that with the board brief.
Yes, in fact, I know you're gathering the numbers for suspensions. I'm not particularly anxious to do that for attendance on a monthly basis and it's for this reason that it lags and it lags because there are attendance corrections. In fact, you heard some of those concerns this last year.
I'm actually more interested in suspensions and reasons for suspensions.
Good. But we should also be able to give you periodic, albeit not monthly, updates on attendance.
Okay. And now finally, Mr. Zuchwitz, I have a question for you. There is a question there.
Yeah, I'm still awake, go ahead.
And it has to do with when you were going through your single plan and indicating how you're going to spend your money. You talk about the means of evaluating your goals and in certain instances, it's report card data. And it raises the question, do you actually compare report card data to California Standards Test results for individual students? For instance, if a student does really well in a particular area in math on their report card or in a particular quarter in math and then, you know, you see their California Standards Test and there's a big discrepancy or a discrepancy in the other direction, they do really well in the exam but not in their classwork, is that kind of information tracked?
Yeah, it is. And you know, in particular, in the upper grades, what will happen, and in fact, it just happened during conference time, is that there are students who we placed in classes based on their test scores and their classroom performance is lower or vice versa, where students scored low but their classroom performance is actually really high and so we make those adjustments based on that. And then, so there is that correlation between the report card and the test data as well, just to see, because ultimately, the test score is one measure, but really the way that a student performs is what we're looking at on a constant basis.
Right, well, and elementary principals have the advantage of having a standards-based report card.
Right.
We don't have it secondary.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Noah?
Yes. I'm just very happy to see Adams continuing on upbeat and congratulate you.
Thank you.
Your transition. And I have only one picky question.
The other questions will be easier, is that what you're saying?
Economic Impact Aid slash English Learner Program. Purpose: To develop fluency in English and academic proficiency of English learners.
Can you tell me which page you're looking at?
I'm reading from page 21.
Thank you.
But on an earlier page, you are funding a math lab computer technician with EIA Lab. And I've come to learn that one can stretch these categories and interpretations of what these programs are about. I just wondered how you made that stretch.
Two, as far as funding the computer lab technician, you mean?
Well, funding them on EIA, I was funding them, sure. But on EIA, I don't see, I mean, I can say, "Well, okay, they're in there and they have to use English to use the math program and English is an important part of learning math." And Mr. Gonzalez is going to explain now that it's a more flexible program.
Let's address what EIA is.
The standard response to my standard question. But because I'm so focused on the problem of teaching kids English, I always ask this question when I see any use of EIA Lab money that doesn't clearly to me look like it's English language instruction.
Thank you for your question, Dr. Noel. It is true that EIA funding should be seen as the equivalent to federal Title I funds. If you look at EIA as the state's equivalent to Title I funds, it does very clearly indicate a focus on English learners. But a focus on English learners with proficiency, not only in English, but also in mathematics. And therefore, Adams' decision to fund a math lab is an appropriate expenditure using EIA funds.
Well spoken.
Thank you.
Always raise the question, as you know.
You got off easy on that one.
So I'm told.
Okay, so I think that concludes our questions, actually.
Thank you very much.
I think we are ready to, you can...
I can pass the baton?
You can pass the baton now, yes. We have a break scheduled after this presentation. Do board members need to take one before we move on? Nope, I think we can continue, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Brent Millholland representing Monroe Elementary School. And, yeah. I wanted to start with some good news for Monroe and that is that in our, the state data that came out, we were, our English learners on that preliminary data hadn't made the AYP cut. They were at 21.7% and we're looking for 24.4. But just earlier this week, the wonderful Dr. Hayden gave me a call and said that he had found some mistakes in the way kids had been categorized on those tests going in. And so some of the English learner students had been taken out of that grouping mistakenly and it was actually 10 students. And so with those 10 students added back in where they were supposed to be originally, we, that figure has gone from 21.7% to 27%. And so we've cleared the hurdle there of the 24.4 and I was doing my little happy dance.
Has the state acknowledged that?
No, no, they won't do that. They have just gotten whatever corrections from all the school districts and that should be coming in December or January. Dr. Hayden thought that we had a good 90-95% chance of that running through. He didn't see any problems with it. So I'll just have to say that, and I know I speak for all of the, for any administrator, that these numbers weigh heavily on us. We take them very seriously and I didn't even realize how seriously until this weight was lifted off my shoulders. And I just, I lost about 25 pounds, I think, because I was just walking lighter. So that was great and it was great news. And I think that it'll not only affect our, well, I think it'll not only affect our English Language Arts scores, but also the math scores, which we're clearing all the hurdles just fine in math, but I think that those English learners in math will go up there also. So we have, I highlighted two focus areas for Monroe and the first one is English language development. As most of us have recognized, we need to make strides there. The other area of focus is just monitoring student progress. And in, within our goals, we have looked at, we have specific goals of, or tasks for monitoring in reading, in English Language Arts, which includes ELD, and in math. So we're trying to look this year more closely at data, collect more data, use it in that cycle of improvement to see kids during the year, use the formative data and not just wait for the CST scores, you know, that come out in summertime. The strengths that Monroe has are, we have a history of focusing on English learners. We, two years ago, we sent a team representing every grade level up to the county office and created an English Language Leadership Team, English Learner Leadership Team. And last year, they participated in the Focused Approach Training and this year, we're continuing with systematic ELD. And so we've been looking at this issue for several years and it's one of the strengths. We have a good grounding, although we're still learning and figuring out the best things to do for kids. In monitoring student progress, we've been effective in the past. I think that we can become more effective. I think out of open court and the monitoring that was happening when that was first implemented in this district, the staff at Monroe became good at looking at formative data in Language Arts. And so as they get the month, every four to six weeks, they do the unit testing, the teachers get together at their grade level and compare notes on how kids are doing and what kids are moving up and what kids need more support. So that's another one of the strengths that I hope that we can build on as we look at math scores more closely and look at our English learners and how they're working through the year. Some of the barriers that we're facing are, the systematic ELD that we're being trained in is wonderful. It's a bit of work to implement in the classroom, although just this week, we've, the leadership team at the district level, the leaders from each site decided to bring a new curriculum to us, which is Carousel. And that fits into the framework of systematic ELD that we're learning about. So teachers are going to have less consideration than I wrote in here. I said that it would add additional work to teachers in the first year to develop lessons that will be used thereafter. With Carousel, it's going to give us a little more meat to fill in that framework. So it's going to become, it'll be less of a barrier, although something new for teachers to implement. We lost our open court coaches over the last several years. We had a couple retire and we had one move to a different site. And I'm sorry that we don't have those coaches on staff because they helped to keep the conversations going. So that's something that we're missing. We, our actions now to move forward are monthly collaboration meetings. We've calendared those for the rest of the year. We've gotten subs, which can be a challenge, reserved. And so teachers are meeting at grade levels at that frequency to discuss program and students moving ahead. Our staff meetings include discussion time and cross-grade level collaboration. So we have those weekly. We have an early release Wednesday, which means students are leaving an hour and a half early and that's time for teachers to collaborate. And then the leadership team that we have, which is working through CELUS and the training that we're getting through them, is meeting on a regular basis and discussing the leadership opportunities that we're learning about and bringing those to the rest of the staff. Our, the overview of our data, this, you know, the big thing for us was that strike against us on our English learners, which I think is now gone, which means that for the last three years, our English learners in Language Arts have moved ahead. So if it's true that we're moving into that 27%, then our English learners are continuing to improve. And I have a goal, a new goal as of this week, and that would be to make another five percentage point jump with those English learners, which I think is very possible. And then the following year, another 5%, which means we would be ahead of the next level that the AYP requires of us. Let's see. I had written in here that our EL scores had stagnated and then dropped looking at the last three assessments, but that's now not true. And actually, I had written that incorrectly because they had gone up and then they had dropped. So it wasn't a leveling and then dropping off. So I reviewed that and I was, so I think it's just good news for us at this point on our English learners. A second target, though, is our low socioeconomic kids that come from low socioeconomic families. And we'll be working with all our data to keep them moving ahead also. Our goals, our SMART goals, our ELD, you know, working, getting the English language development into our system on a broad basis. Our teachers are now using systematic ELD. They, at every grade level, they have time set aside during the day, at least 40 minutes, to work with those students that need English language development. We, starting last year, we were using front-loading for all the other subject areas, for reading as well as science and social studies and front-loading our English learners with vocabulary and concepts, giving them a preview so that as they move into those lessons with the whole class, they have a little bit of a jump and a little more understanding as it's delivered to the whole class. We're looking at, looking at assessments on that four-week basis with the collaboration that's going on. And, oh, another thing that came up in discussions, actually, with our superintendent and assistant soup, we're in, looking at the, because we have a math program where students move around to other teachers, it's a leveling program for them. We're now going to put the language level of each student on the folder that they carry with them so that that teacher, as they get a new student that they're not familiar with, with, they can look at that, and they can know that they're working with an English learner at a particular level, and hopefully do some, some of the front-loading, or be sensitive to the fact that, that some of the language in math may be what they haven't experienced at this point. So, we're trying to get the, the English Language information in all areas of the student's life at school. One of our other main goals is to reach, is to improve performance of students reading two years or more, more below grade level. And we spend a lot of our money at Monroe on personnel. I think a lot of the schools go there. And we have a number of instructional assistants, nine instructional assistants that we pay for out of our categoricals. We also have a teacher tutor at each grade level. And so that's sometimes called a Title I teacher. We multi-fund, and so, you know, it's, it comes from various categorical funds. And that, the instructional assistants work at, at the different grade levels and, and help break the classes down into smaller groupings. And then the teacher tutors are doing the same kind of thing, but there's, they tend to pull even smaller groups during the day. They'll, they'll work with one or, or two or three students at a time and really target intervention, just exactly where these kids need it. So, a lot of our money goes there. We also fund a homework center, which is here in, in the downtown area from, in our attendance area that's downtown. And so two nights a week, two evenings a week, from six to eight o'clock, we use the Los Flores Preschool Center. And students are able to walk to the homework center, and we have two teachers there and one instructional assistant on Tuesday and Thursday evenings, and they serve anywhere from, we, we started out averaging about twenty-two students a night, but we often go up to about thirty-five, which maxes out the room that we have available. So, we also put, put money into that. We also have two AmeriCorps members at our site, and this is the third year that we've had AmeriCorps members, and they've proven to be a great help. They're there eight hours a day under their contract, and so they're, they help also in, in breaking our grade level groupings down into just those smaller groups. Our professional development is continuing with the systematic ELD in services, which I have teachers at today and, and were in yesterday. The, the whole staff at Monroe is participating in that. We have grade level collaboration, which every four weeks, the teachers also meet on, usually on lunch hours or on those Wednesdays, to have just sort of ongoing meetings with, you know, kind of the, the daily and weekly scheduling of things. And then we have the CELUS training, which has led us into using the Academic Program Survey. And so as a staff, we're looking at that document, which comes from CDE, and looking at the nine essential components, program components at Monroe. And that has spurred some great conversation among staff. And we've, we've only gone through two, two of the nine components, but, but that seems to be a good kind of microscope to look at ourselves under. Under school leadership, I've heard other principals say that they're endeavoring to get into classrooms more, which is always our challenge. And my, what I'm trying to do is to get in two classrooms a day, which, for me, you know, instead of setting a day aside, I'm, I'm just doing that on a, and calendaring where I get to. And at this point, it's, sometimes I need to be in there anyway, and I get to hang around and do my, you know, my observations and, and work with kids a little bit and, and see how things are running in classrooms. So, that's, that's how I'm going to focus on that. And then our site council this year, and, and many members are carrying over from last year, that's a, it's a two-year membership on the site council, and they have been very interested in our assessment data. And so I'm collecting information from our teachers for them so that we can, and, and listing out, which I know we're doing also as a district, as, as all the elementary principals brought to our meetings, what, what assessments we're using. The site, my site council is very interested in looking at those. And then looking at data, this is, I'd have to say, one of the most exciting site councils I've had because they're just right in that cycle of improvement and seeing how it works and wanting to be involved in it. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be meeting with my council and, and talking the same kind of talk that we're doing in other venues. And that's my conclusion.
Thank you very much. We'll go back to board members. Are there questions? Dr. Noel?
No, I don't have any particular questions. I'm, I think the record speaks for itself.
Okay.
I've always been a fan of mastery math, and I think it continues to function.
Mrs. Harder?
I, I just want to say that we, this, over the summer and continuing into the beginning part of this year, we've had a new person in charge of mastery math who comes from a wonderful testing, test-writing background from several different states. And she has looked at mastery math and the terminals that kids move through and, and aligned it very tightly with our standards. And so we're all, the whole staff is just thrilled with the work that she's been able to do and hope for even more for mastery math.
One question, one comment. When you listed your SMART goals, you didn't include any measurable goals. You didn't connect any numbers to it. Now, you articulated that, but you didn't include it, and that would have been really helpful to me. And I know that in terms of board focus goals, the number one board focus goal would overlay measurable goals, but it would have been very helpful to have seen it written down in the SMART goals. Just.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, quick question. You, you indicate, as do, you know, many principals putting together their plans, the, the measures that are being taken to reach the goals for where you're spending your money. And you talk about the homework center at Los Flores, and one of the, the measure is attendance. You listed that, you know, I assume, you know, the teachers keep track of who attends on Tuesday and Thursday evening.
That's right, yes.
But I wondered if they used other measures that you didn't include here. I don't know if they look at report cards. I mean, they're, they're helping the students do homework. Presumably, they'd be interested in how they did in a particular class, if a student consistently had difficulty with their math homework, for instance.
And with the conversations about assessment that we've been having and coming out of that, the APS that we're working through the survey, teachers ask that exact thing. You know, what, what do we know about how the homework center is helping us? And so now we're taking those attendance sheets, and we're duplicating them and giving them to the, the teachers that those students belong to, so that the teachers can start to see if the homework is improving and if their grades are improving. And so we are starting to monitor whether that's effective or not.
Okay. I mean, you've articulated a lot of things that, that aren't necessarily reflected here, and I think that you end up shortchanging yourself because if this is what I see, then I'm not getting the whole picture.
Okay. Thank you.
On this homework, can I have just one quick, quick question?
Yes. Dr. Noel?
What, where does the homework cut in grade level-wise?
I don't understand your question. Where does it cut in?
Well, the research suggests, research on homework suggests that it works best for high school kids.
Oh.
Especially if they're behind.
Mm-hmm.
That in elementary school, it's not so clear, and, and for very young kids, it doesn't look real promising.
We.
My reading of, of, of two or three minutes analyses.
That's, that's also a question that we have, you know. Is, is homework, it's not so much in general is homework useful, because we feel that it is in that it gives practice to students in what they've learned during the day. So, here's some more practice to cement it in. And so that's, that's kind of how we view it. And most of the kids that show up at the homework center are, tend to be the older ones, where they can sit down with somebody and, and get that help that they can't get at home.
So, you don't run a pressure cooker that's giving kindergartners homework?
No, no, no. We're, we're not there.
Mrs. Melikoff?
During a recent visit, I noticed there's lots of putting kids into small groups, and whether, I guess that's the systematic ELD and the math groups and.
Yes.
And it's, that would be usually, I mean, it must be usually beneficial to children to be, at least little groups with an adult there. But it takes a lot of coordination, and I'm wondering how that, all that coordination happens.
We've had, you know, there's, we had a teacher retire this year, and somebody else took her position. It's, it's, she was a special ed teacher, and, and another special ed teacher took over the, the chore of building our, what we call PBI, Performance-Based Instruction for Language Arts. And that is where students move within grade level to, so our, our third graders are, who are in three classrooms, are broken down into nine different groupings. And so we go through, at the beginning of the year, placing, we, we have one grade level, we have a student written on each card, and we use assessment data that we have from the previous year, spelling, their Language Arts report card grade, their CST scores, and then just student, I mean, teacher observation. So, we pin these up on the wall, and then we start, we see how many groupings we can, you know, we have available, and then start, you know, just shifting around. And so we have an initial blush of putting them up according to maybe one particular score. And then the, the previous year's teachers come in, and they put those students into the new groupings, and they say, this one didn't perform well, but I know how he works, and so he's moving over here. And so we move from our, usually two English learner groupings, and then kids that, English-only students that are, you know, at grade level or maybe below, and then we work into the gate group, the higher, the higher-level grouping. And so there's a lot of effort that goes into that. Even our instructional assistants are involved in some of that. And so it takes probably three to four weeks before we can actually get PBI running. And then there, there's a computer and a clerk, for, for mastery math, there's a computer and a clerk and a, a director for that program that are moving kids around on a daily basis. Every day, teachers get a new list of where their students are going for mastery math as they move through the different terminals. So, there is a lot of organization that, that keeps that afloat, both of those.
I just, I think some of my questions have been answered already, although I have a question that's similar to Mrs. Harder's, which has to do with how you're going to measure something. And you mentioned that in your development, or staff development in ELD, that what you want is for students, or the, the goal is that there will be an improvement in instructional strategies and materials. And then the measure is that the students are, are, I'm sorry, the completion of staff development.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering if there's any measure for how the student, how the teachers implement what they learned in staff development.
A measure of the teachers.
Well, not a measure necessarily of the teachers, but a measure of whether the strategies are actually changing.
Okay.
Whether those, the new strategies are being implemented in the classroom.
Mm-hmm. I think the ultimate measure is, is there an improvement in student performance? And that, you know, we haven't gotten all the training in systematic ELD, and I know one of the things that we're going to be looking at is the assessment piece, and that hasn't been fully developed at this point. But I think that, that it's, that'll be my observation as to, you know, how it's, how it's rolling out. And we're going through a lot of collaboration and discussion. I've brought teachers together who are currently working with those small EL groups and said, let's talk about how this is rolling out, you know, the systematic ELD, even though we haven't gotten all the training. And then I've brought them together with their grade level, because those are across grade level, those, those teachers meeting. And then I said, let's meet as grade levels so that there is support for those teachers who are currently teaching the ELD, because all the other teachers will have a rotation during the year of working with those kids. So, so there's a lot of collaboration, and, and I think that ultimately, looking at those student scores, looking at what assessment comes out of systematic ELD, but then also the embedded assessments in open court. You know, we need to see the improvement there, and then that crosses over into these test scores.
Great. Thank you.
Just one more question.
Oh, yes. Ms. Harder?
I just want to tell you that I really appreciated your comments about your site council. Having served on a site council, it takes a big investment by the principal to, you know, educate everyone to be able to come to the table and be full participants, rather than for the principal essentially to be leading the site council in the direction that he or she wishes it to go. So, I compliment you on that, if you feel like you've, you've gotten everybody to the table. And it, and it helps when it's a parent with a second year on site council rather than a first year. But I think it requires a big investment of time of a principal, but it pays big dividends to have everyone at the table on an equal participatory footing. So, thank you.
It, it is a monumental job to bring everybody up to the same discussion level. So, it, it really is something that, that I walked out of the last meeting and I went, yes, it's working.
I, I had a footnote, if I may, at some point.
Sure.
When Jim Tucker was here, one of the, things I recall very clearly him saying was that Monroe provided a model. And indeed, he, he was raving about it, saying that it was not just a model for the district, but very well could have been a model for the nation. And, and I look at your, I'm talking about students with disabilities, for those who are not familiar with the Tucker Report. And I look at your scores with, for students with disabilities, and they are, they're indeed higher than most. I, I see a drop in oh-five, oh-six in ELA, which concerns me, but I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about your model and about your experience and, and where you think that's heading and.
I, I had to consider retirement of our lead special ed teacher this year. And we have a very collaborative special ed group, and that includes two teachers and four instructional assistants. And, and, and our whole staff is very collaborative in mainstreaming children, in being able to, to move them to different venues through mastery math, through PBI. And I think that, that that just willingness to work with all students and having high expectations of them, you know, I, this is my fourth year at Monroe, and I, I didn't bring this with me, it was there. And I'm very happy to see it continuing, and as new staff come on board, they, they drop into the culture and, and assume that also. And so, so our, our special ed department is very collaborative. They, although they have their individual caseloads, they trade students, you know, according to what the student needs are, the groupings change. Everybody in the school moves through the school, through PBI and through mastery math. And so there is no stigma with a particular child getting up and leaving and going, you know, to, to special ed. It's just part of everybody moving and, and moving to the level that they need. So, I, I, I just think it's, it's kind of a culture. So I, I, I just think it's, it's kind of a culture. I don't think it's so much a framework. But I think we just have a good collaborative staff that is looking at what student needs are.
And this drop to eight point eight percent is the loss of a key person?
I hope, no. No, that's not because she was there last year when these, when this testing took place. And...
That's a, that's a large drop. What's, what's your explanation? What, what's?
I don't think I have an explanation right now. And it's something that I'll, I'll have to look into. I'm sorry, I don't have anything to say about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you. I think we can take our break now. And then we will resume with Peabody Charter School.
We will call the meeting back to order. We will be again resuming our single plan presentations. And we will resume with Peabody Charter School.
Yes, and we have our new principal, Kate Ford, to present the Peabody Charter School site plan.
Thank you, Arthur. Good morning, boys. This is really an exciting morning for me. As the newest principal in the district, and I'm sure you'll see why as I share some of my thoughts with you. At over seven hundred and forty, I think we're at seven hundred and forty-four students. And a staff of over, I don't hear it from, oh, sorry.
A staff of over... A staff of over eighty-five, full and part-time people at my school. I know that Peabody is a school of immense achievement and immense challenge. And I must say, I was a little wary about this opportunity to create this single plan so early in my career in this district. But I have to say that through the creation of the plan and discussions with key personnel, especially Pat Morales, who helped me tremendously, and a review of all the available data, which is pretty amazing, thanks to Davis, I was able to come to lots of conclusions and learn a lot about this district and my school. I quickly, by doing this plan, found out about the priorities and focus of the board and the achievements and the special attributes of Peabody Charter School, even before I stepped on the campus. I learned about the curriculum and instructional program in a way that perhaps I wouldn't have done just by being there every day. And also, I must tell you, I learned so much about the vision and the expertise of Pat Morales and the teachers at Peabody. And by doing this plan, kind of began to see and develop an understanding of the match between my skills and my interests. And the puzzle pieces of what's the next step in the progression for Peabody Charter. And also, how I could possibly start to live up to the expectations of the school's governing council, of the search committee, of the staff, and of course, of the Santa Barbara school districts. So I wanted to let you know that I think this morning, part of my job is to perhaps even reacquaint you with Peabody from the eyes of a newcomer and to introduce you to me. So first of all, I think I should say that I don't think I completely understood the first section, the requirements of the first section of the executive summary, where it asks for school-wide focus areas. Because certainly, the academic improvement goals that we have decided upon at Peabody are at the forefront of all my thinking and planning and action. But I think you may also be interested to know my big picture goals after three months on the job. First of all, at Peabody, we are at a nearly five million dollar budget. So one of my major goals is to be able to manage and be completely responsible for all of the revenue and expenditures at my school. And that includes, of course, the categorical funds, but also there are many, many others. And prioritizing all of the budget expenditures to the needs of the students and the staff at my school, also the facility. I also have a major goal of making this a very smooth transition, because change is never easy at any school. But I have made every effort to make sure that it's been smooth and successful, especially taking over for an outstanding founding principal. And at the same time, trying to make a smooth transition be exciting and fun and interesting, and also as painless as possible. Another major goal for myself is to, and for the school, is to increase the level of communication school-wide. Kind of putting myself on a fast forward with staff and with parents in terms of communication. And this has included the use of technology. We are going to be moving to being a paperless school eventually. Expanding and making our website more dynamic. A weekly newsletter that I write to the community. And also a daily email good day memo to the staff. And also, just as important as all of those more formal types of communication, is an open door policy where you can come to see me anytime you want. Another major goal for the school is continued academic growth, which we've addressed in this plan, and I hope you support, especially in two areas. Narrowing the delta between the ELL learners, students, and our native speakers, English speakers. And at the other end of the spectrum, I think we can continue to do better at Peabody in terms of creating a challenging program for our most accelerated learners. Another school-wide goal at the Peabody Charter is safety and security. And this is a bit related to communication, but also broader. Peabody classrooms don't have telephones. And so we have purchased cell phones for the short term and are beginning to install telephones in all of the classrooms. And that will include, the new phone system will include voicemail for everyone, which I was rather shocked to see that Peabody does not have. And I think this is really crucial in order to communicate more effectively and also ensure the ability to communicate, especially when there's an emergency. And then my own particular professional interests lie very deeply in expanding the ways that we can monitor, track, and assess student achievement. And especially in ways that go beyond paper pencil assessments. More robust, robust student portfolios, student-led conferences, and culminating events at grade levels or in classrooms that exemplify the integration of the curriculum and provide multiple ways for us to assess students. I'm also really excited about helping my staff move toward more short-term kinds of assessments that help us prescribe and learn actually from maybe even a monthly five or six-question kind of assessment that will help the teachers continue to monitor the student growth and be very prescriptive about the way that they change and expand their lessons. And also, a goal of mine, and I've been doing this for many years, but I continue to want to do better at assessing and monitoring teacher effectiveness. And that's always one of our major goals as leaders at schools. But I truly want to help Peabody move toward an evaluation system that really does correlate very well with the stated goals in this plan and also holds the teachers individually accountable for student achievement. Now, I know that you're most concerned today about the plan for the use of the funds, especially the categorical funds, to improve our student achievement. And I know you reviewed the data for my school. And you know that Peabody's story is a good one. One that I can take no credit for. So this is somewhat of a surreal experience for me. But I want you to know that I am very committed to continuing this good story and building upon it. Peabody has met or exceeded the state targets in English language arts for every group, with steady improvement in the scores of the Latino, the socially disadvantaged, the English learners, and the students with disabilities. You also saw that in mathematics, in the scores of the disadvantaged learners, the English language learners and the students with disabilities, we made very good improvement and increased in all areas and met the state targets. Also, our API growth goals were met again this year with an increase of twenty-eight points school-wide, twenty-nine points in the Latino subgroup, and twenty-one points increased in the scores of the white learners. And our gap in the index has steadily declined since 2003. So I feel very strongly that because especially of the significant improvement in the API for our socially, socio-economically disadvantaged students and the ELL students, that this proves that the steps Peabody has taken and continues to take make a very important difference. So in our efforts to further review and become even more, put a spotlight on the needs going forward at the school, we have found as a group and as individual students, some specific areas for improvement in ELA. And you saw that we have set a goal to increase our school-wide percentage at proficient or above to sixty-five percent. And to focus our instructional efforts for the ELL students in the areas of word analysis, academic vocabulary, and writing conventions. We really feel this will make the difference. And we also believe that we can and should continue to raise our mathematics achievement school-wide to ninety percent in grades three through six at the proficient and above levels. And we feel that we can do that by focusing more in the area of algebra and strengthening mathematics vocabulary, which we, which dovetails very nicely with the ELA goal of vocabulary improvement also. We know we can do better in science. And so you saw our, our science goal. And we want to reach a sixty percent or higher composite score for our students with a focus on the Latino and ELL students, again, since there still is a wide discrepancy in their achievement in science and the scores of the white students in science. And we are certain that we can make these gains, that they are possible, by reinforcing and focusing on academic vocabulary and developing new strategies for reinforcing and supporting learning. The GATE data that we received from Davis also confirms that we still have a ways to go to meet the needs of our Latino students, since Peabody has stalled a bit in the participation of Latinos in the GATE program. So I like to think that there are three areas that the use of cate, well, all funds, but especially categorical funds becomes crucial at a school in improving the instructional program. And I am going to discuss them today under three, three headings, time, training, and technology. I know there are other factors and strategies that certainly go into improving and enhancing a program. But for me, time, training, and technology are the keys. So first of all, funds at Peabody are used to buy us time. Nothing to me speaks more to improvement and excellence than providing a time for teachers and for students to improve and to excel. So we do provide time for students and time for the teachers. So first of all, some examples of time for students. The ELL students in the primary grades who are struggling have early intervention tutors who work with them in their classrooms above and beyond the regular academic time. This is usually in the afternoon. And in very small groups, those students receive individualized instructions in the very areas that they're beginning to fall behind in or experiencing difficulty from the beginning of the school year. Another way we buy the students some time is with our after-school homework centers at the upper grades. These are provided especially for our ELL students in the areas where they're struggling academically. The teachers in the afternoon after-school teach and reteach and regroup and individualize what was taught earlier in the day, earlier in the week, earlier in the year. And homework centers are four times a week. And also, at Peabody, we buy students time with our summer school program. It's designed to provide creative, out-of-the-box, fun, but also meaningful instructional support for students who are underperforming or at risk. And as I said, time for teachers is essential, probably one of the key features of, I think, the outstanding program at Peabody. At Peabody, the PE program, the PE teachers, provide weekly release time for grade levels to meet, plan, review data, share information, and review the progress toward the standards and the goals. The grade level teams meet two to three times per week for forty-five minutes when the students at one whole grade level are taking PE. That's time. Another way that we provide time is once a month, the teachers at each grade level have a three-hour block for planning lessons and assessment and reviewing data. And this is provided by our Friday Arts Day. So we have a number of different arts teachers and programs during the day on Friday. And grade levels rotate through them. And they, the classes build on each other and are one after another. So once a month, grade levels have three hours to work. That's time. Also, we have our late start Fridays, every Friday. And that's a significant source of time for our teachers. The block from seven-thirty to nine-fifteen is used for grade level meetings, for individual meetings, for special project meetings, and also for all staff meetings. And I'm really delighted to see that at Peabody, that time is used in a formal way and an intelligent way. And I haven't always seen that at other schools across the state. Also, it's the expectation, somewhat informal, but it is an expectation at Peabody that the teachers have weekly lunch meetings with each other to continue their dialogue about students, about instruction, and about data. And finally, I think we provide time for teachers and time for students by carefully grouping our students in the classes in their academic areas so that the teachers are really able to focus on student needs as they teach the standards. Much of the day is heterogeneously grouped, as it should be. But for reading, math, and language arts, the students are grouped homogeneously. And this definitely buys time. So second of all, funds are used for training. And probably the most innovative and most important way that we train our teachers is by the institute, which is held the, the week after school is out in June, for Peabody teachers. This is a full-time, full-week of learning and reflecting and planning for the next year. And they actually do create a year-long plan, which becomes their roadmap for instruction for the coming year. And I actually brought a sixth-grade plan along for you to see. And it's right next to you, Mrs. Harder. I don't know if you can see it. It's a sixth-grade plan. So it might be interesting for you just to take a look at what the sixth-grade teachers came up with. That's, it's just, it's one plan, so I wouldn't, you could look at parts of it, but...
Oh, okay, okay, got it. I'm sorry.
That's the whole year. I didn't make you copies. I didn't want to think...
No, there was no reason to.
Presume that you might want them, but I could, I could give it to you if you like. Anyway, also during the institute week, we have special presenters who come to work with the teachers in their areas. This, for this coming June, we already have two scientists from the Lawrence Hall of Science from UC Berkeley booked to come and work with our teachers. And of course, their expertise inspires and teaches the teachers. Teachers also plan for improvement during that week. And they investigate new materials to help support the program. Other ways that we provide training are that the teachers are very much encouraged to attain, attend conferences and workshops. In fact, I have three teachers today that are attending a very important math workshop in Palm Springs with the expectation that they will not only learn, but they will bring back and share what they have learned and the new strategies with other teachers. Another way that we train teachers and provide training to everyone at Peabody is that our teachers receive additional stipends to learn, grow, and share, not only from, not only from conferences and from workshops, but also from each other. I believe that nothing is more powerful than experts on your site, especially at a school as large as Peabody. So right now, we have identified teacher experts in the areas of the arts, in writing instruction, in mathematics, in social studies, in science, and in technology. Training is also provided through our leadership team at school. We have one representative from each grade level who has an enhanced role and expectation at, at the school. They are responsible for sharing articles and data, for disseminating new information to the teachers or new expectations from me or the district, and acting as mentors to the less experienced teachers. And also, Peabody uses a specialist model at each grade level. One teacher who becomes a specialist, an extremely knowledgeable and skilled person in a particular area of teaching. And we have grade-level specialists for technology, science, literary, and mathematics enhancement, and also art. And also, we believe that partnerships do create great opportunities for training and add to the effectiveness of a program. So Peabody has partners, has partnered with the Museum of Natural History, the UCSB Math Department, informally with Brooks Institute. And also, we do hope to affiliate ourselves with the Lawrence Hall of Science at UC Berkeley. I think that will be a very nice tie-in with our science program. So finally, in the third component, technology, much of our funds are also used for technology to make better use of our time and training at Peabody. So first of all, we are trying very hard to develop a robust student information system and the time and training to use it for the teachers at... and the time and training to use it for the teachers at Peabody so that they can effectively track their students' progress. We use EasyGradePro at Peabody, and it provides us with many solutions to be better teachers and evaluators of student progress. For example, here's what happens at all grade levels using EasyGradePro. First of all, we assess the student three times a year using the SRI reading comprehension test. This is tracked, reviewed, and recorded in EasyGradePro. Three times a year, there are benchmarks assessments in fluency in math, and there's a writing prompt, which is also recorded in EasyGradePro. And in EasyGradePro, we also record the ELA scores, math scores, including all the subcategory scores, and the student status such as home language, language level, their test score ratings, and also their special program participation. All of this information flows very nicely into the teacher's gradebook, kind of answering your question from earlier, and provides a comprehensive picture for the teachers to use in planning and assessing and teaching. And, Mrs. Harder, I also brought an example of three pages from the sixth-grade teacher's EasyGradePro, and you can see all those things referenced right there.
And they all go together, right?
They all go together. There's three separate choices on EasyGradePro. Also, I want to mention that we also do provide time and training and technology for our parents with the use of our categorical funds. We have literacy classes in English and Spanish. We have computer classes for parents. And we have our monthly English Language Advisory Committee meetings, which are held in Spanish and are focused on topics of interest to our parents. We also believe that we've only scratched the surface in terms of using technology at Peabody because there's so much that technology alone can do to help lead us to improvement and instructional excellence. But I thought I would share with you a couple of plans that we have on the horizon for technology at Peabody. We want to lead the way in podcasts at our school with instructional video and audio recordings that can be accessed on MP3 players and computers to teach and enhance learning, learning for teachers, and learning for students. These podcasts can be viewed or listened to at the learner's convenience because, once downloaded, you don't need to be connected to the Internet. So our first podcast that we have planned is one that we will develop for the sixth-grade students this second semester. It will be titled "Journey Across Ancient Civilizations." Our teacher, Marty Robertson, as many of you know, is taking a semester-long sabbatical to Europe, Africa, and the Middle East to discover and then share what he knows. So I'm very excited about the potential of podcasts. Rich Dixon, our Exploration Center Director, and I are also going to be working on two separate podcasts, his in technology and mine in writing instruction, which is a real area of passion for me. And we are going to be able to share those with teachers, have them be able to download and access those podcasts when it's convenient for them, and then, at a later date, develop or expand upon what was learned as individuals in a large group. So I really feel strongly that with our outstanding tech plan, it's really great, again, I had nothing to do with it, but our tech facility and the Exploration Center and our tech leader, Rich Dixon, I think Peabody can create an even more robust plan to create time and training through technology. So I just hope that you can tell that we have immense dedication and we understand how big the work is that we have ahead of us. Peabody's record of success makes the teachers and me feel that we can do it, and I want you to know that we have a strong commitment to be reflective and analytical at every turn, making the best use of our funds, categorical and otherwise. I know what our challenges are. I still have much to learn about the school, but I know we can capitalize on our strengths and work on our areas of need. I do take very seriously my role as a leader and as a person who creates a culture of excellence, and so I too encourage you to visit us, and thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Ford, for an incredibly detailed and thorough presentation.
Thanks.
No doubt, we probably still have some questions for you, however.
Sure.
I do want to, before we point out, before we continue, I do want to point out that we have lost one of our board members, although we still do have a quorum. Dr. Noel, I think, had an appointment or something. I'm not sure why he chose to leave. And we have also had an additional candidate enter since I introduced the candidates. So Kate Parker is also in the audience. And now, we will go back to questions.
I was laughing when you were describing the podcasting. I'm wondering how long it will be before one of your sixth graders suggests maybe they could do it from home if the teacher provided a podcast. I live with that right now. You know how old my students are. It's like, why are you answering the phone right now? You know, shouldn't you be in class? Well, I caught that podcast. One question, and I don't want to make any assumptions. Is your governing council the same as your site council? Is the makeup exactly the same?
It is. Okay. There is no site council.
It is the governing council.
Okay, great, great.
My question, I don't want to make assumptions about people's backgrounds, but given the fact that you have, you know, a substantial number of English-language learners on your campus, I don't see it reflected on your governing council.
That's a very, very interesting, I think that's a valid point.
So I'm sure that GATE students are well-represented on your governing council. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And it's, I mean, as you say, you know, you're the new principal, you know, learning the lay of the land. I think it's something that you might want to...
You know, I totally agree with you. I think that there are many, when you are as independent in many ways as a school like Peabody is, there are lots of factors that go into choosing the members of the governing council because they, in a sense, have a very big responsibility in lots of ways, not only to a type of learner, but perhaps even some other skill sets. So we're really looking at that long-term.
Yeah. I liked the breakdown of student data.
Thanks.
It didn't just include the CST scores. It had breakdowns of different skill sets that were being tested on the CST and then overlaid with class assignments and grades and overlaid with other critical information. I know that on a lot of school sites, a lot of that kind of data is gathered by hand. Hopefully, Ares will change some of that because that's what's being implemented, but I salute you for that. It's a great profile of an individual student, I'm sure, with, you know, just a couple clicks of the mouse.
That's right.
Yeah. That's fantastic.
And of course, and the only other point to mention is that unless the teachers have time to look at all of that, it almost means nothing. So that's why it's all so key and so interrelated.
And then I just have one other question for you, and it's obviously a system that you acquired, but quickly run through for me. No, no, you'll be able to do it. The PE release time seems to figure very heavily in your grade-level teams. Is that correct?
Well, it certainly is a major component.
Tell me how that release time is used, because it's, the PE is given how many times a week?
Depending on the grade level, two or three.
Okay. I mean, that's a fair amount of time. How is it being used?
So those, the entire grade level goes out to PE.
Right.
So that means that all of those teachers, say, at second grade, five teachers are able to meet, and under the leadership of their leadership rep, in other words, maybe you'd say their grade-level leader, then they do any number of things, depending on where they are. It's very nice to note that in many grade levels at Peabody, these groups are self-motivated. They know what to do. So it depends on what time of year that, the time of year somewhat depends, determines the kinds of activities they're involved in. But, for example, right now, they're looking back over their first-quarter assessments, first-quarter student achievements. They would get together and maybe they would regroup the students for academics, and so they are doing all the things that I referenced in my report. They're just working hard to provide the best kind of program for the students. They're also doing many nuts-and-bolts kinds of things during those meetings. They're planning their field trips and assigning different responsibilities for other school activities.
I just wanted to ask, because when you go through the plan, that release time figures very large, you know, in each part of the, you know, in a different way, I'm sure, in each part of the plan.
Right. And for the most part, as you could also see in the report, that is not paid for with categorical funds.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
First of all, it seems like you have a lot of wonderful programs and a lot of procedures and a culture and a lot of training going on. I'm wondering about new teachers. Do you have a pretty stable teacher force, or do you have to reintroduce another teacher to this? It seems like it would be a major undertaking.
I think that's a great question. Of course, there seems to be a lot of support in this district and at Peabody for new teachers. First of all, through UCSB, through BITSA, but also, maybe this is the case across the district, but there are teachers, I'd say, a majority of teachers at Peabody started their careers at Peabody. They have a keen, keen sense of the curriculum, and the expectation is that you are, once you are experienced, knowledgeable, and successful, you're sharing that with someone else. So that is another part of, I think, this release time and the planning time that the teachers have is to work with new teachers. And there's very little turnover at Peabody. When I came to the school, the first week that I was employed, we had interviews for one position, and so I was able, I've hired one teacher at Peabody, a fourth-grade teacher, third-grade teacher.
Despite growth, you've had growth, though.
A lot.
Yeah.
Yes, but I think a number, a few teachers were hired before I got there, and we have this fabulous pool. Again, this year, I can say, so it must have been great last year, too, of student teachers, who then are working so intensely in the classrooms, are really members of the team, attend all the training and the meetings that I've referenced. And so, in a sense, if they're hired to come to Peabody as first-year teachers, it's really their second year. And so I can't say enough about the program at UCSB. It's outstanding.
One more question about, again, this governing council. We're not familiar, I'm not familiar with the governing councils. Is there, is it made up, you have to have certain number of teachers or community members?
Yes.
Because it's much more heavily weighted toward staff personnel than our site councils are, and I'm just kind of curious about that. There are like, there are six people that are personnels of the school itself.
That's right.
And I'm wondering if that's pretty standard, or if that's a little more than...
Well, it seems to be fairly standard for charter schools, yes, and I think that's just because in many, many charters, including Peabody's, teachers are a major component in the planning and direction of the school. Now, it is our intent as a school to achieve nonprofit status, and when we become a nonprofit school, what is the term, nonprofit?
Five oh one C three.
Well, yes, definitely, a five oh one C three. Then we have to have actually a less, forty-nine percent or less has to be members of the interested Peabody community, and interested means anyone who's receiving a salary. So actually, in the future, I'm not sure exactly how far in the future, that will probably change, but it seems to be a very major aspect of the governing council, that it is, that it does have staff members, voting staff members as part of it.
Can I just jump in right here, because I had a question about the council, too? Of the people who are listed as parent or community members, how many of those are not parents of the school? Do you have the sheet in front of you?
One. Do you have it right there?
I do.
Roger Earls, one.
Okay, is not a parent of the...
And Nancy Dow is not a parent.
Okay. So those are just interested community members?
Yes, they're all, they're former parents.
Ms. Dow is your accountant, correct?
Yes, she is.
Bookkeeper slash accountant, yeah.
Okay.
May I follow up on the discussions with the school about the school gaining more financial and personnel independence from the district? We have had discussions this last year. In fact, we rely heavily on Paul Minnie as our expert for how to work with charters, how to negotiate with charters, and on our advice, Peabody approached Paul Minnie as well, and we have a letter of agreement so that this is all a shared process. Paul's coming down, meeting with the governing council, meeting with the staff, he'll be meeting with us, and we'll be bringing you revised MOUs. Now, the extent to which the school actually becomes independent is somewhat up in the air from this standpoint, that to gain significant financial independence can be accomplished through a five oh one, three C status. To gain personnel independence in hiring and contractual issues apparently can be done. The school's scores are still included in our district's scores, for example, so it's still seen by the Department of Education as a school within our district. We have been talking about the school becoming independent. It wouldn't be full independence, but we would spell all of that out in an MOU, and we'll be bringing that to the board as we go through those discussions.
What's the schedule for charter renewal and MOUs and so forth?
The charter was renewed some two, three years ago.
Yes, charter renewal's in 2008, but as we enter into this process with Dr. Sarvis and the district, we will probably also just go ahead and renew the charter at the same time.
Yes. So it would involve changes in the charter. There are already statements in the charter about the relationship with the district since this was a conversion school. So with those changes, we would ask for an early renewal.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I just had, this is more by way of reflection, but we've, and we have lots of high-achieving schools, schools that are, you know, really moving into that, you know, mid-seven hundreds, high-seven hundreds, and breaking that eight-hundred threshold. But just a reflection, Peabody spends a week, their entire faculty spends a week together on their summer institute, and the Santa Barbara Community Academy makes their annual trip as an entire faculty to the Core Knowledge Institute, I don't know, whatever they call it. And it just seems to produce such a positive benefit. And, you know, I realize it's not necessarily measurable, but I think that it's something that we should think about, trying to find ways to replicate that kind of effort for the benefit of all of our school sites. I mean, I realize that's a far-off goal, but, you know, trying to, you know, to do, you know, accomplish that kind of...
Team building.
Well, team building and culture building, but also, it's just so much easier to create a focus and to set goals when you have an intense amount of time spent on that kind of activity, yeah.
Actually, I don't think it's that far off of a goal. In fact, a couple of our schools actually did similar replicated parts of that, and I think probably a lot of our schools would like to see that as a goal for their professional development. May not be a week, but, I mean, that would be, you know, that would be the ideal, but start out with a few days. Yesterday, I was talking to the management team, and we've talked about this at the principals' meetings, that we've spent a lot of time, effort, and money on our professional development, developing what we, really setting our target last year, putting it in place, and implementing it this year as far as a lot of training with the ELD and our training with UCSB and our leadership team. Next year will be the next step in that, where we're, you know, really on target, keep the course, and really get down to the site level with that type of work, not changing the focus, just digging deeper and really staying the course. And so I could see as soon as even next June, knowing that we would have, you know, new monies, new categorical Title II monies, maybe there's even some left from this year to fund that kind of thing going into next year. So I don't think it's a far-off goal at all. In fact, it's something we've talked about a lot. We see what it's been doing for some of our schools, and we know it's one of the best practices out there.
I have a question that I really...
I have a question that I really had intended to direct to all the principals, and I just neglected to do it. And that is the, the relationship between your, your council and your ELAC. Do the two groups have any, do they meet ever together? Do they have any relationship with each other? Do they report to each other? Is there any connection? Is there any overlap in, in membership?
No overlap in membership, other than the principal. But I think that's a great question. They haven't met together, and they don't seem to have a relationship at this point. But I'd like to look into that. I think that, as you can well imagine, there are a number of different committees and groups at Peabody, and it does seem that another part of my charge is to bring them all together and help them understand what, the purpose for each one of them, what they're, what they're working on, and then to understand each other, and maybe even personally know each other better. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
You probably don't know this, but last year, there was a member of the ELAC committee that was a member of the governing council as well.
Someone that's not on this year?
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
And that provided some of that crossover between the two.
Mrs. Harder, did you have a follow-up?
No, no, connected to that, and, and it's, it's not really the, the subject matter, our focus of today, but the Secondary Parent Advisory Council will be meeting with the Secondary DLEC Committee in January, I'm hoping. I've been, I don't, Michael's looking at me like, oh, I don't know.
No, actually, we are planning a January meeting.
Okay, and it may be that Ms. Sowaski might be interested in having the Elementary Parent Advisory Council at the district level meet with the Elementary DLEC.
Yes, Michael and I have spoken about that, and it's in my notes. I just looked at it yesterday for the EPAC meeting, that we need to do that. We had it planned, actually, for October, and it didn't happen, so I need to...
Okay. But I mean, we're talking about doing it at the site level, trying to accomplish it, but it's something that we're striving for at the district level as well.
I also had a question about your, your plan for parent participation in family workshops. And I was wondering, because you were, in looking at your data, it looks like your population has changed a little bit, and it's grown a lot. And, but even the demographics of the population itself has, have changed a little bit. And the Hispanic population has dropped to below fifty percent, which is, in our district, it's above, overall in the district, it's, what, sixty, what is it, sixty-six percent? So I was wondering then, in terms of reaching out to families, if there's been any sort of outreach to the Hispanic families in your, in your attendance area?
Well, as far as I can tell, and what I've been told, is that the participation in our ELAC has grown rather than declined.
Oh, that's good.
We have a lot of very interested parents, and very dedicated parents, and, you know, knock on wood, I think part of that is because we're a charter, and there's a greater understanding and expectation of parent involvement. So this year, my understanding is, it's continued to grow. I have, we have so many parents on campus all the time, and that includes our Hispanic parents. And so I, I feel very confident that there are so many ways that we not only reach out to those parents, but also that they come to the school knowing that that's part of what you do when you're a Peabody parent, is you become involved and work in the classrooms or come have lunch with your children and interact with the principal. So I think, I think we're doing well in that area. Of course, you want to make sure you're always doing a good job, but I think it's well done.
Okay, and as far as recruiting Latino families, or encouraging people in your, the Latino families in your attendance area to choose Peabody, are you doing any outreach there?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't have any sense that, that there's ever been any real true recruit, recruiting going on. But when I talk to parents, again, I feel very lucky, and, you know, take no credit for this, but in talking to parents, the word seems to be that this is a great school to send your children to, and that there's an effort to make sure that all the parents, that the Hispanic parents in particular that live in our area, which is down Delavina, attend the school.
Okay.
So, but I'm not aware of any recruitment efforts.
Thank you.
Actually, I think that that probably would be a good discussion for the MOU, is seeing what part of the Peabody population is reflected in its, its neighborhood enrollment area versus, you know, transfers in. And I know that there are parts of the, of the charter, it's probably the MOU, not the charter, that has to do with transfers and, and siblings and, you know, that kind of thing. So it may bear, it may, may necessitate taking a good look at those kinds of, of figures.
Well, we already know that, you know, as I said, seven hundred and forty-plus students, that over two hundred are transfers from other districts and within the district.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now continue with Open Alternative School.
Yes, and I'm happy to introduce Gwen Phillips, head teacher, administrator at Open Alternative School.
Thank you. It was great hearing what you had to say, and I feel like I know you a little more now than I have, and you're a wonderful follow-up to Pat, I think. Your staff must be very pleased. And I just want to say to the two of you that my people at school, the community, was very, very appreciative of seeing everyone there the other day, with the idea that, you know, you truly took the time, all of you, to come and look at what our needs are. So thank you, thank you from everybody for that. And it's good to see you. So I haven't been to a board meeting for a while, so I haven't talked to you. Well, we go from, I suppose, one of the biggest schools to one of the smallest schools. But we are small by design, and I think you know that. Even if we had the space, we wouldn't want to grow a lot, because we think that we can do, we can build a community by having a small group of children and families. And so, this is our thirty-second year. That's always a surprise when we look at each other and say, oh, my gosh. It was interesting, as you were talking about, and you were talking about, I guess Laura brought it up, about the teacher change. And we are like Peabody in that for years, people came and nobody ever left. Well, here you are, right? And then about four years ago, we had half of our staff with a married couple who decided to go have an adventure, and two people who decided they needed a couple of years off, one of whom has returned, and then one retiring. And it was like, oh, this is interesting, a whole new thing for us. And it does rock the boat, it's very interesting, or you have to, but we, like Peabody, have, are connected with UCSB Student Teaching Program, and we, we are four out of the five new teachers, well, actually, one is returning now, but we hired four student teachers. And so it is wonderful. I also have been involved in the Student Teaching Program at UCSB. I'm so proud to have been and to have worked with them all this time. We are lucky to have the UCSB program in our schools. And we have certainly gained by the people that, well, if they come on board and they embrace the philosophy, then it's perfect. As you say, you're hiring a second-year teacher instead of a first-year one. So we've been very lucky that way, too, and have a solid staff, just solid, who work very well together and who, well, actually, as one of my teachers said one day after leaving a staff meeting, and she called me that night, and she said, it is so wonderful to be with a group of people that you know you all believe the same things about children and about, and when something's brought up, everybody embraces it. And, you know, of course, we have our arguments, but the basic, the basic things we're there for, for children, we all agree on. And so it's fun to work with a group of people like that. And that is the way our staff is. And adjunct staff as well as teachers. As you, and you have looked at our material for our scores, it's always hard for us to look at the test scores just separately, because they are so, just a part of all the things that we do. And we measure our success and the health of our school in so many other ways as well. But just in looking at the spring test scores, we feel good about our API grew, we've narrowed the gap in English Language Arts, which feels really good. And actually, when I, I'm surprised that we have over twenty-five percent Latino, or I have to say, yeah, over twenty-five percent, which I think is more than we used to have. However, I also had parents who objected to separating out that way. And, and I just have to say that to you, because I can see this parent's face here, who has a child who is multicultural, right? And so, and so it's like, what do you mark on the list there as to what you are when you're asked, you know? So this parent expressed, and it's onsite council, expressed disappointment that we have to label that way. But I think that one of the things that we're pleased about is that the gap is not much between, in, in English Language Arts, and that in math, even, the gap has narrowed. And so, and we were aware that we had a gap, but we really have more Latino children than I realized we did when I absolutely looked at the numbers. But anyway, we generally feel good about the way our scores are continuing to improve. And I think one of the things that, that I've always told my staff, and we've talked about, is, you know, this is happening, and we are still teaching in the way we want to teach. We are still looking at children as whole human beings, and, and having plenty of time to work on character education. I know I've had student teachers in the past who said, I can't do class meetings in my class, because there, there's not time for that. Well, at our school, we make time for that. And so we have been able to do what we believe in doing and still have, you know, the standardized tests be strong. So that feels good to everybody. And I always remind my teachers that they are doing a really good job of doing the dance, you know, which means combining the two. I know that our similar schools' ranking is still, you know, down there, but Dr. Sarvis and I talked a long time ago about how, you know, maybe that comparison isn't a very good comparison for us. The schools that they're comparing us with are not schools that have the same philosophy as we do. And so we kind of think, okay, that's there, you know, if it comes up, it comes up. The state ranking is probably more important, and usually, we have a pretty solid state ranking. So, all in all, oh, and the science. We did look at the science and realized that there was maybe one area of science that the children didn't seem to do as well in. So the teachers will take a look at the earth science at the fifth-grade level and be sure they're covering what they need to cover. But, but all in all, I, I think we felt pretty good about our state scores. Our school-wide focus, actually, I think that we talked about this, oh, and I, your idea about having summer workshops are really wonderful. What we've done over the years is have one day, but the teachers are never paid for the one day, there are no funds to pay them, and so they're willing to take one day to come together for a retreat, and that's what we've done. But it would be delightful to have some way to pay them and have a little more time together, because that is wonderful time for teachers. We, the one thing, because we have a small, we have small numbers of children, what we do is take a look at the low-scoring children and the ones that need the extra support right away. And the day school starts, the teachers all know which of their children are going to need some extra support, and they start to think about, so what can I do to help this child in learning? We are continuing to work, and actually, in the last two or three years, the teachers have worked on math instruction. And I think we've seen some improvement in the standardized tests in that area because of that. But the big thing for them this year, and we agreed before the year ended last year, was that we really want to work more on our belief that children need to become mathematicians, that the math education needs to be conceptual and not just doing the arithmetic. And so I, half the staff went last summer to, what's he call it, Bill Jacobs', Center for Mathematical Inquiry workshops in the summertime. And they, they, in fact, Bill has been to school and worked with the total staff, and I think we're going to do more of that during the year. And, and he's kind of doing that out of the goodness of his heart. And, and the teachers are very much into trying the things that they have learned from those workshops, and sharing with each other. We do loads of that. So that's one of the ways we're going to be working on the math. Our primary teachers have always taught math from a conceptual point of view, and, and as authentic as you, as they can get it, you know, doing, having the children experience things and engage in, you know, building something where they have to measure and do what they have to do to build whatever it is, that kind of authentic learning. We, we have, for the past two or three years, real, well, I guess we realized a few years ago, that we do a great job of having our children believe they're writers. They come out just, you know, gung-ho about writing and feeling confident. However, the mechanics of writing is a little area that we've had to push on, and we've done it, and we've improved our scores. And we're continuing to work on that. Although I have to say, the thank-you notes that the two candidates in the room received, they, there was some, what's the word? We looked them over, and then we rewrote. Yeah, editing with my help, right? But anyway, we're working on that. In our evaluating last year and looking at this year, we realized that in some, there seemed to be more uncaring kinds of things going on with children, and even occasionally something that you would label intolerance with each other, that we, you know, just is not a part of our community. And so this year, we decided to, to focus on that a little bit more, and spend some time really building our community into the caring community that, that we should be with all children. And helping the children be responsible for the, being a responsible member of the community, like picking up things that are laying around, the whole recycling thing, I mean, the working together. And actually, as we look at our permanent site, you know, it'll be fun to have the children be involved in what they would like to have happen with their site. So those are part of our big goals for this year. Things, and the last ones are things that we have to look at and evaluate based on what we observe, based on talking. My little student council talks about what they want to do and what improvements they think are needed, and then we evaluate the progress. And so I think one of the ways that we look at, at how successful we are is by talking about things, about observing, and having the children self-evaluate. That's very big in what we do. And so that's one of our measures for how it's going. I think you know about, about our philosophy and how we work with children. I was going to review some of that, but I, but I think you, you understand that, that it's important to us that the children are engaged in learning, and that they, working together is very important. Actually, I'm just going to brag, because, because I remember when we first moved out to La Colina, we didn't have the whole back section there. And the, and the classroom right across from me was a La Colina teacher who I got to know. And she said to me one day, you know, she said, I can pick your students out of all the students that I have in my classes, because, she said, yours are the ones who are willing to cooperate and work together. She said, most of the others are only interested in getting the A, and they don't want to share it with everybody else. And I thought, thank you for sharing that with me, because, because that's what we work on. And we have our children learning together and cooperating together, and there's, the competition isn't there. And I fear in some of, you know, and I think just in our society, there's a whole lot of competition these days. And so we try to downplay that. And, and actually, occasionally, there's a family that gives me what for, because their children are competitive athletes, and we need to have some competition. And we do, in our athletics. I am, oh, in our school profile, another thing I wanted you to know, too, was that we do bank minutes in our school day, so that at the end of the week, the children go home an hour and fifteen minutes early, and the teacher... and the teachers use that time and beyond for team meetings, for looking at what they're doing and what could be better and, and looking at how they can work together the following week, how they can regroup children for special needs, getting ideas from each other about interventions that they can use. And our special ed teacher is very, she's very outgoing and very much involved in helping us. Going in and sitting in on these meetings with teachers and giving of her expertise on how to help children. So, I guess you'd say at our school, it's more than just the children with IEPs that are getting some benefit from her expertise, which is nice. Looking, I think I talked about our test results and all that. Just so that you understand that, that the teachers are, collaboration is ongoing. The teachers often use assessments that they have designed, just little. And one teacher was telling me the other day about a project that she gave her kindergarten first graders. And she just sat back and watched how they did it and then observed. And from that, figured out what her next steps were for teaching. And, and that is actually our whole purpose in any assessments we do. And it is probably for everybody, is that helps you decide what your next steps are. And that's what we need to be looking at. So, I would say that the teachers work very close with each other. And, yeah, okay. Now, let's see, I talked to you about the goals, that, the big goals. We, we had quite a list of goals. And I, and I always feel committed to sharing with you the other things that are our goals because we don't want to just focus on the academic. That of course, is part of our goal, our goals. But I mentioned the tolerance and the caring. Another area that we've really been focusing on and are for this year is the health of the children, the physical fitness. I felt like our physical fitness scores could have been better. We have our organic garden and our lunch program and our classroom for this triangle of health education, nutrition education. And we have a wonderful retired physical ed teacher who taught elementary school physical ed for years. And she came to our school quite a while ago and she's been volunteering ever since. And she, this year has taken on, she works with children from K through fifth. And, and what the older teachers primarily are doing is really observing how she teaches PE to the kids so that they, it's, it's a staff development thing. And I'm so thrilled that she's doing that. Occasionally, we give her, the parents give her a little stipend, but she basically does it for nothing and she is very, very good. She came to your meeting, right? And so, we feel very appreciative of Diane Jones and her expertise. And she works with the children in a very, in a very developmental way and she's a master at it. So, we're very lucky to have Diane and our teachers are benefiting. They are going to be better PE teachers. Other goals that we always have are environmental education goals. That's big for us at all age levels. And with that comes many onsite experiences, field trips. We're, we're very committed to the children having outside experiences in the arts or, or extra experiences in the arts. That's one of the ways we spend some of our categoricals is funding our drama teacher and music teacher. And it's always, one of the teachers said to me yesterday, talking about one little child that she has, and you know, she says, he struggles in language arts. But she said, you ought to see him in the part he is in the play. And he's got a major part. And this is a little Latino child who actually, they spent last year in Mexico and then, and now they're back. But, but he, he does need extra support. But he is major in his part in the play. And as she said, you know, what, what a wonderful way to have him have confidence in himself, which we then move on to helping him grow in his academic learning. So, there are lots of, lots of ways. I, I don't think I have to sell you on the idea that the drama is positive for the children. Another, another thing that, that we, I mentioned, I think, the class meetings a little bit ago. That's our character education. And in every classroom, every day, there's a class meeting. And the teachers weave into that, problem solving, children having a voice, how you, how you work with each other. They're just amazing ways that they have the children working on inner, on socialization. And last year, we purchased some materials for years. We have used some of Jack Canfield's materials. And he's come out with a bunch of new stuff. And last year, we purchased materials out of our staff development monies for everybody to have his whole new bunch. In fact, I'm going to, I don't know if anybody knows him, but I, I do. We have decided we're going to try and connect with him because we've used his stuff for years and we never have met him. And since he's a Santa Barbara person, we're going to try and do that. So, there's a renewed commitment to, in fact, at the next staff meeting, teachers are going to be sharing successful lessons that they have just pulled out of that to begin with, with each other and make that our start in using these new materials. The other thing we decided we were going to do this year is have every class have a service learning project of some kind. And that, that's just, these aren't things that we put money toward. We don't have the money. But, but just for you to know that there's that commitment so that there's going to be community giving from every class. I know you're interested in our categorical funds and how we're using them. And even though you have that, I'll just quickly go over it. I am excited about this. I realized with the amount of money, or we did as we looked at it, but I have to say, it came to me. We have this great young woman who was one of our student teachers last year who has been, being a long-term sub for a teacher who's been on pregnancy leave. And when she loses her job in a couple of weeks, she has agreed to work for two days a week with us to support the, the underachieving learners and the Latino learners in the areas that they need some extra help in. And I, we've never had this amount of time before from somebody to just concentrate on those children. So, I'm really looking forward to this wonderful young teacher. I mean, she's just amazing, coming and working with those children. And she already knows them, so that's a nice step. So, that's one thing we're using our EIA and LAA money for. Of course, the Family Service Agency Council, all the schools are doing that. And we so appreciate having that extra emotional and social support for the children. We have for a while now hired an aide for, just part-time, three hours a day for our K1s to help the children, help the teachers give the children a solid boost in the beginning years. So, we have an aide at that level. And then, last year, and the teachers felt like it really worked. And we're going to do it again, is hire someone again for only three hours a day to work with the second through fifth grade classes. And focusing just on the children who need the extra support, the low-achieving children. And, and we actually have a person in that position who is, has a teaching credential. So, that's wonderful. Well, and she's a parent too, and that's why she's doing it. But it's wonderful to have people who are willing to come and work for a low amount of money, but to give their expertise. We also bought some special writing supplies for our beginning writers, whatever books we could for our library, small library, small amount of money for the books. But we keep building on it. We also, as we have done before, use some of our money for release time for teachers to, number one, assess children through the year. They need some time to do that. Some teachers more than others, and if they have extra support in their classrooms, they don't need as much. But, and also, for them to communicate well with parents. Our teachers write yearly narratives about the children to sort of pull everything together. And that's very time-consuming. So, the site council likes to give those teachers a little bit of time to do that. And then, I mentioned already, the drama and the arts. And the money going toward the arts is matched by the parent group. So, it's, our categorical funds are not paying totally for the arts. We also have a small amount of money in garden education, ESL materials, a teacher leader who is going to the LD training and who will come back to the rest of our staff and talk with them and work with them. And she's, she's very well-trained and very passionate about this area herself. We also have a small amount of money to add to our computer program, small amount of money for GATE. And then, we do have another grant that we got last year just because we have eighth grade in the elementary school. It's a safety grant. And we are going to use that money for things we need at school to make the campus safer and also for some work with consultants who come in and work on tolerance. So, it's like hitting safety from those two angles. In our staff development, or I think I mentioned, our teachers went to the summer math workshops. They, 100% of our teachers went to the training before the school year started with Sudana Dutro. Our sixth grade teacher is involved in the avid and very happy with what he's gotten out of that. Some of our teachers belong to script and do regular writing workshops at the university and then they come back to us. That's, that's, we also, any teacher that gets any of our school money to go to workshop has to come back and share it with everyone else. So, that's a part of what we do too. And our teachers, we always encourage our teachers to visit other progressive schools or go and observe other teachers who have similar philosophies of teaching because we can learn from people other than our own group. And there are some around. So, the teachers are encouraged to do that. I, we're looking forward to another good school year. We have a great staff that is so committed to the child-centered approach. We looked, I, I loved and I passed on to people what you said when you visited the other day that as you went through the classrooms, it looked like they were happy learners. And that's one of our goals. So, we look forward to another, I mean, we're in the middle of another great school year.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation again. This is always an interesting discussion of this school because it has, I think, such an interesting philosophy. And the families and the students who go there, I think, are always so supportive and, and excited about it. As I think truly are, we're fortunate, all of our class, schools really have, have very strong support from their students and their, their families. I had a couple of questions just about the, the pages on which you listed the, the individual goals. But, because in most of yours, there wasn't a measure included. And I was wondering if that was intentional or do you have, how do you plan?
I have to say, it, it's difficult, as I said, because we use so many, you know, we do use some standardized measures. What we use is the California Reading Initiative. And those assessments are used at every grade level throughout the school and the teachers share, you know, with each other. We use, we use a program called Words Their Way. And there are measures as a part of that program that our teachers are committed to and they use those. Beyond that, the teachers design assessments and, and it's, I know, it's just really hard for us to make it a numbers game, you know? It's, what they do is they design the assessments, they use them, they share with each other how their kids did with them and then plan instruction to go on from there.
I'm wondering if you could maybe, if, if you, if you feel uncomfortable specifying qualitative measures, I'm wondering if there's any way that you could develop some, I'm sorry, if you don't want to use quantitative measures, if there's any way that you could develop some qualitative measures that would be more in keeping with the philosophy of your school so that there were, there was at least a measurable outcome?
No, I, I think that, I think you're right that that's something that we need to do. We do it, but it's not written down. And that's a good suggestion. I, I know we need to do that.
Then I just had kind of a, not so, I guess probably not so much a question as a comment. And that is, in a couple of your ELL and goals, you identify the student group as Latino students. However, your Latino percent is about 25%, you said, or 24% this year? And your EL learners are only about 3%. So, when you're, when you're looking at language proficiency, it doesn't seem that the Latino student population is really your, your student?
Not really, except that as we see from those scores, there's still a gap. And so, the idea is with the extra help, that the person will work with those children as well as the very few children that we have that are true EL learners. I mean, we just, we don't, don't have many.
So, the students, the, the, are most of the non-EL students who are Latino, are they, have they been reclassified? Did they start out as, as, as English language learners? Or are they dominant, are they native English speakers?
Probably the children all are in some cases. There's a second language at home and the parents encourage the second language, you know? It's interesting because we were talking about this the other day. We need to sit down. I think what we have done, and I know that it's okay to do, is you have a committee that sits down and talks about the children, right? And which of these children need the extra. Probably they were on the list originally because there's another language spoken at home or because they're identified, you know, the background is something else. I, I'll be interested in looking. We just got finished with the self, you know, testing and I haven't really looked at the results there. We have quite a few little children new to the school that we may need to give some extra support to because there seems to be some diversity in the background, which makes us happy. I, I just have to say that it's, as everything else with us, it's, there's no box and it really depends upon the individual child and what we see they need. And that's how we've looked at it.
So, if, so, I mean, this sounds like it would be a great model or a great thing then for any of the students who were below proficiency. So, are any of the non-Latino students who are scoring low, who are low achievers included?
Well, not with that tutor, teacher tutor, but that's what, who the aide works with in both cases. But primarily, of course, it, again, money is the thing that holds us back, you know? We need more to be able to have more time to support those children. But we just don't have, we have such a small amount of money that, but, but that aide for the second through fifth does that. And as I say, she's a teacher, so the time we get out of her is, you know, the max time because of her skills. So, I hope that that helps, but that's how we support those kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other board members, questions? Mrs. Malikoff?
You mentioned Paul Caulfield. I was just thinking that Bill Saroni, I think, at the County Education Office, I think he's a friend of his.
Is he?
So, maybe want to contact him. Because he, he brought him in for the RAP. Canfield, did I say Caulfield, Canfield, sorry. Let's see, your, your scores for children with disabilities are amazing. They're almost better than your, I mean, they're equivalent to your regular. Do you have any, anything you want to say about that?
Well, I, I mean, I guess under that would be autistic children, right? Who are generally very bright. I'm just amazed at, actually, I was thinking about the drama and one little boy who's an autistic child who, last year, in the play. I mean, I really believe giving those children the extra kinds of things, like the drama, like this little boy for one, whose scores were fabulous, but he's just plain smart. I mean, he can add up faster than the computer can, you know? But in the play, he had a lead part. He very much, people were focused on him. Plus, of course, in addition to his lines, he knew everybody else's lines in the whole play. And so, he was, I, I think he just got so much from doing that. I do believe that working on children's emotional, their self-esteem, giving them opportunities to excel in different ways helps, you know, this kind of thing. We have, of course, we have aides working directly with the children that have, you know, we have about four aides with our wheelchair child and our autistic children have aides who I'm sure helped them, you know, be able to excel more than they would if they were just thrown in a classroom without any extra support. So, I, I don't know. I, I actually was thinking about another child. Because what, what I usually do is try to look at where our kids, what do our kids do after they graduate from high school? And I have to say, this year, I didn't sit down and make the list and figure out where they were going. But, but this morning, I was thinking about some that I know of and then about one who was a special ed child all the way through, had an IEP. And by gosh, she, before she graduated from high school, had a job as a vet tech and is working at one of the local veterinarian's offices and doing. And is working at one of the local veterinarian's offices and doing a wonderful job. And they love her and she's very successful. Well, she's not doing the college route right now, you know, but she's doing that because she feels good about herself. So I feel like, I, I think we feel strongly that one thing we're doing for children is giving them confidence. So that they can go on no matter what.
Can you also comment on the, your attendance is quite a bit higher. No, let's put this way, I'm sorry. Students are missing school a quite, quite a bit higher rate. Would you like to come? Yes. Sorry. Would you like to comment on that?
Well, I guess I have to say, actually, I, I have a little note here from a parent that they just came to our school this year. And she, she said in the note, "We were talking about our trip to the Sierras next weekend. And how we have to go on Friday so we can get there and have time to be there." And she said, "But the boys didn't want to miss school on Friday because there's, they just love school." And she was so appreciating, you know, that they didn't want to miss school. And, and I'm using that as a point. In fact, our parents do, if they're going on a trip and they need the extra day, they, they believe that what they're doing with the children is probably just as important as what, although in this case, the children were fighting with her about not missing school. So maybe one of the best things we can do is just make school so wonderful that the kids don't want to miss it. But I think our parents do tend to say, you know, if we have something to take our children to, or, I mean, I had one child go to Greece for three weeks just a couple of weeks ago. And it was like, how can I argue with that? You know, so I think our parents tend to do that. We try to discourage, but, but they're their children. And, and I know that it affects us. And I guess all I can say is we'll keep working on it. And we do call people and we do encourage them to be there. But I think our parents as a group tend to make those decisions on their own.
Thank you.
We'll work on it though.
Mrs. Harder?
Yeah, thanks, Gwen. I had the same question that Annette had about measurable goals. And I know that it's antithetical to the culture of the school. But I think particularly with English language learners, I think it, it really might facilitate the process of, you know, setting even too high of a goal, you know, for, for the school year. But at least you're, you're tracking your progress. So I do think it's worthwhile. And then I, you get such a small amount of money, you know, as, as compared to many other schools. It's not just a small student population, but a small title on population. But I have a really grinchy question. And I, I guess I would strongly recommend that you shift expenses so that your parent, parent group was paying for the garden expense. And that it wasn't being used, that Title V money wasn't being used for the garden.
Well, let me explain why we did that. That Title V money last year was the first time we ever had it. And it's supposed to be for an innovative program.
Right.
And so we decided last year that our, what we're doing with garden education is innovating, innovative. That doesn't, that doesn't go into the garden. What it is, is it's materials for the teachers to teach garden education.
Okay.
I happen to have-
I don't, you know what, I don't have any, I don't have any quibble with the fact that it's very innovative. The full description is to help students reach minimum proficiency on state content standards and assessments. And I have no idea whether it does that. So I guess that would be the cautionary note, cause it's tied into, to state standards in some way. On science or health or, I mean, it may very well be.
Well, of the things that they're working on, and I do have a teacher who before she came to us was a garden educator. And so she's working as a lead teacher and going to, we're looking at materials for the teachers. And those materials will be standards based materials. So what we really are going to be working on with them comes under science and health. And it does follow the standards, but we're just not quite there. So it's not really for, well, actually, last year we spent a little bit of it, I think, on a, on a mural that's going to go with the worm bin. And so it was an art piece, but I, I hear what you're saying.
I won't.
Well, no, that's, that's all right. That's part of, part of the project, part of the innovative project. So I, I hear what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
A mural that goes with the worm bin. Yeah, exactly. That is a hard one to follow.
Come see it.
We will. Okay, well, that brings us to our final presentation this afternoon, Roosevelt Elementary School.
Okay, we have Principal Dr. Donna Ranzoni.
Thank you. If you could all hang in there with me just a few more minutes. I don't, I'm not sure if that's my stomach or someone else's that's crying. Thanks for everybody for staying, I, I appreciate it. I'd like to thank all my colleagues that have gone before me this morning and, and last week. And who've left me precious little to add to their plethora of inspiring and inspired instructional programs and support services. As they showcase their site council's financial planning wizardry that helped to maximize those kind of peek-a-boo budgets. Thank you, Mrs. Harder, for recognizing that. As we all worked in the pursuit of providing all of the Santa Barbara students a wonderful education. As with all of our schools, Roosevelt's goal is continuous growth and improvement in instructional programming. As measured by each of our students' academic achievement, as well as the growth we see in their social and emotional growth. To that end, the Roosevelt staff in conjunction with our site council have set goals for this year, as you've read in our site plan, that zero in on very specific growth targets that measure, targets that will measure, that will provide a measure of academic achievement for all students in language arts and math. And for our EL students' growth in English language fluency. And for the implementation of support services that extend learning time through teacher collaboration. And for providing auxiliary services to students and their parents that will help address and overcome non-academic barriers to achievement. With the, our overall categorical budget is not huge at Roosevelt. Although it has increased this year because with a dogged pursuit of finding our socio and economic families in that category that could do free and reduced lunch, who I always knew were there. We did get Title I money, which it put us over the $100,000 mark. But with $150,000, which is about what we came in as without carryovers, we don't have a whole lot of funding allocated. But what we did allocate, as you could see in the plan, was to personnel. And this was deliberate. It was a very deliberate focus on our part. As we discussed and planned the allocation of funds. And it's based on the measure in large part of previous years' allocation of funding to the very same services and programs. With the addition of an additional support for English language development. Because we are seeing an uptick in our primary grades of English language learners. And our recognition that some of our students who become fluent or reach fluency, while they become fluent readers and are doing better in speaking English, they run into problems with the academic language. We also base this funding allocation on a very in-depth analysis of the kids' achievement in the spring as they were exiting us in the spring 2006. And what we needed to look at when we got them in the schoolhouse door on August the 28th. And not only their scores, but also extensive reviews of our new students who are coming in. We typically get an increase of almost a half a class in fourth grade. This is my third year there. And what we see are kids coming to us from the private schools in fourth grade, which is kind of interesting to us. And some of them in great, great, ready to learn. And some of them who've run into brick walls and have decided to access the public schools for our services. So what I'm going to do is I gave you an overview of the goals and you've read them. So I'll go through what some of the programming is that we're spending the money on. And integral to all the programming is continuous monitoring, which I'll sort of summarize at the end. First and foremost, we start with the kids who have no English language skills and we provide a newcomer aide program. We typically only have maybe between six and a dozen students that come to us not knowing any English each year. And it's not always just Spanish. This one year we had a student who always spoke German. This year we have a family who always speaks French. So we'll actually have two newcomer aides. Our next huge expenditure, the newcomer aid program obviously isn't expensive because there's not that many students. But certainly it's needed. Our next big expense, and it's been an ongoing and very successful program at Roosevelt, is the reading intervention program. And it is RTI, response to intervention at its best. I didn't give, this was here when I got there, it's running beautifully and very successful and we're expanding it. It's primarily for grades first through fifth grade, although we do put some sixth graders in it. And it's divided into two sections to help with students to gain fluency in reading. And then those students whose the fluency doesn't quite do it for them when they get to third, fourth and fifth grade, we then pick them up for reading comprehension. So we, we have four instructional aides. And this year we were fortunate enough to get a certified teacher, although she doesn't have her certification finished yet in California. But she came to us from Missouri. And so she's actually a credential teacher with a reading background. So we've been able to expand that. In the kindergarten, we continued the kindergarten aides, which the sites had to pick up the cost of the instructional aides in kindergarten. Because we noted that in K and first grade are where our largest group of English language learners come in. So we felt it was necessary to in fact continue that. So we have two, three and a half hour a day aides. So that provides seven hours a day for the four classes. So an hour and a half per class, the kindergarten aide, 90 minutes of support. We also have allocated funding to keep our counselor, our FSA counselor full time. The counselor does individual counseling, homeschool communication. She works with social skills groups, monitor, attendance monitoring, because that's critical for many of our families at risk. Works with parenting issues and also serves as an inter-agency coordinator for us. So that if we need to access outside help for our students, we have someone who can do that. We also pay for three days a week, a computer teacher who provides technology teaching to the students directly. Support for the teachers and technology. And then allows for release time. Because the student, the teach, in conjunction with the money that's raised by our parents for an art teacher and a PE teacher. So that each student gets a computer and art in a PE class once a week. That releases the three teachers at the same time. So that they get, three times a week, they'll get a 45 minute planning time with me or just with themselves or special ed or whoever they have to meet with for planning. If it happens to be a four class grade level, then the deal is they get timed during the day to do some prep. So that they, they do their planning time after school. We, this year what's new is the addition of a certified teacher to support differentiated instruction, including the English language development in kindergarten and first grade. They were, the teacher works half day in the kindergarten and a half day in first grade. And the, and it's up to the teachers how they want, each grade level, how they're doing it. In kindergarten, the kindergarten teachers have leveled the ELD, the English language learners, according to the CELT, using the focused approach. And they're actually delivering the instruction while this teacher then works with that, the other kindergarten students in that class. She then also does some pull out or push in actually work to work with the students later in the day. We try not to pull them out too much. We, as far as the back patio, that might be in. And the, this ELD teacher also, this teacher who, we call her ELD teacher, but that's what we're calling her. But she does, she's helping to differentiate for the entire curriculum. It's just that they needed to buy time for the teachers, the classroom teachers to do that English language development. And she's working in the first grade the same way. We have one class per grade level, kindergarten and first with English language learners, which is, so there's about 20 kids per grade level. Which is different for Roosevelt than it has been in past years. But they're along the continuum of level one in CELT through level five. So it'll be interesting for us to track these kids and see how it goes. Once you get above second grade, we have hardly any. Third grade, we, we see another bulge. And then fourth, fifth and sixth grade, we don't have many. So it's not an even stratification. So we have to work with it each year to build a program that meets those needs. The other thing that we have also done is one of the reading intervention aides is also our CELT tester and coordinator. And so what I've used Catherine to do is to, to help us move the kids, to track the kids' progress, to provide the data. She's a data tracker for us. And then she works and coordinates their newcomer or ELD program and their growth. And then lets us know when it's time to put them in reading intervention. So that's the linkage, newcomer, ELD, reading intervention. And ELD and reading intervention often overlap. We've also added this year something, we didn't add it this year, it was in last year and we didn't, weren't able to realize it. But we've left some funding in there because we want to increase our math literacy through some technology. So we've left some funding in there for buying some software in mathematics. We have about a dozen students, grades three through six, who have scored 600 continuously on their CSTs in math. And our fourth grade class, over 80% of them are proficient or advanced in math. So we recognize that there was a need there, but then we, so the, the regular classes sort of pitched higher. And so we needed to do something so that we had some time and some technology there, as one of, as Kate mentioned, to expand our time to be able to address those needs because they were so widespread. In terms of staff development, I'm a firm believer in, in theory and action. And our teachers are great at that. They, they figure out what's going on. And so we try to individualize the staff development as much as we can. We of course are accessing everything that the district has to offer and what more. We do things by grade level, they'll often go to conferences as a grade level. We just sent the third grade teachers where we have some special need students in the area of communication disorders to a workshop so that they know how to better address those students' needs. So we do it that way. And then I let teachers select workshops on their own because we have teachers first year, we have teachers at their 39th year. So learning across the lifespan, you know, you can't always find a one size fits all for that. Roosevelt's strengths, we have a very stable staff and how, and a veteran staff. However, we're beginning to recognize that probably within the next two or three years, there will be a significant number of retirements. So I thought it was, it's real important that we look towards renewing our staff with teachers who are new to the profession. By that I mean zero years to seven years, as well as mid-career people who are transferring in from other districts. We have very wonderful, good informal teacher leadership. That was there when I arrived, good grade, we have a grade level team leaders. And a teacher in charge when I'm not there. We have, our resource teacher work, handles the SST, you know, coordinates all that. And she also oversees the reading intervention programs. There's lots of teacher, informal teacher leadership going on. It's a professional culture that looks to growth in their skills. But with a very healthy skepticism, would be a nice way to put it, for the next new, new thing in education. So, so we always have great conversations about not throwing the baby out with the bathwater and adapting what we need to of new ideas so that it fits Roosevelt's needs. I also believe that, that the strength of our teachers is their ability to craft in the moment and at the moment. Roosevelt is unique in that we have students who have just come to the United States. And we have students who perform above grade level when they get here in kindergarten. So it's very important that our teachers be able to look at those needs and adapt in the moment and at the moment. And they do that quite well. Some of our challenges that we face, I've listed there and I'll go through them kind of quickly. It was interesting to me to hear that, you know, we have support for wanting to expand our teacher development beyond the school year. As usual, note I put in the site plan as I did last year, our day and our year are just not long enough. But with the contractual parameters that we have with SBTA, it's very difficult to do that. So while charter schools do enjoy a little bit more leeway in terms of funding and, and the contract, we don't. So it's more a voluntary thing. So I, they ask you to keep that in mind. But I would definitely say that that's one of our challenges. One of our other challenges, and this kind of coordinates with the budget awareness that you raised, Mrs. Harder, which is the budget, if our, most of our budgets go to personnel, our categorical budgets go to personnel issues. And we don't necessarily have a handle on our budgets. For example, I put everything in here that was online, that was posted online. And I'm willing to go ahead and spend that. willing to go ahead and spend that, but now I have to be able to access a personnel pool, and a lot of that is classified, and we don't have access to a broad and deep pool, just because of the difficulties that Santa Barbara has in attracting people in this part of the county. So if you get your budget late, coupled with difficulty in recruiting and having an applicant pool, you're looking at sometimes not even being able to fulfill what we put in the site plan until January or February. So that's an issue as well. School attendance is getting much better at Roosevelt, due to some of the other wonderful ideas you've heard other principals say, so I'm not going to go down that road, we recognize attendance, and I even had little slips at the beginning of the year, where the parents, when they came to sign them in tardy, had to sign a slip that said that they recognized that they were, and we counted them, and after they got five, we mailed them home, and it has cut down our attendance. Part of our tardiness, I realized, had to do with our parking, which will, parking and drop-off issues, which we'll address at another time. One of the things that I think is, not a challenge, but a strength that we've built on, is we don't just look at our students' test scores. I mean, we look at them, we look at them hard, but we've instituted some things, like when new students enroll at Roosevelt, we circulate their cumes when they come with a slip, and it goes to not only the classroom teacher and myself, but it goes to the counselor, and it goes to the SS, the teacher who does SST, so we make sure that we don't lose a kid in the mobility process. So a lot of times, kids that change schools, a lot are the very kids that are at risk, and you don't want it to be November, when the teacher finally says, "There must be something wrong here," pulls out the cum and says, "Oh, no, why didn't I know this?" So we circulate the cumes, they write on the slips of anything that we need to know, we collect the slips, and then we just get to those kids right away. The other thing that we do for kindergarten, which has been very successful, is after the enrollment period, in late May and early June, we set up an appointment with each kindergarten student and their family with a kindergarten teacher for an informal assessment. This allows us to put together class lists in early August with the kids that we think we know are coming in. First of all, sometimes they'll register, but they don't come, so it also helps us with attendance, who's actually going to come, and it helps us to see what our needs are going to be incoming. And then in August, we do it one more time for people who've registered in August, and then we have, a week before school opens, a kindergarten social, where we actually have the kids go to their class, meet their teacher, it helps us know who's actually going to show up, so that we don't run into a personnel issue. And two, we get to see the kids in action in the group, so first day, we're ready, if we've got a little one that's not quite ready, or is ready, but we're not ready for As far as being an instructional leader, I think one of the things that I, a strength that I bring to Roosevelt, and that the teachers and I have been talking about, is that it's not just about the academic achievement of each of our students and all of our students, but it's also about learning, about teaching them to be good citizens of the United States and of the world. I think that's going to come home hard next Tuesday, when it's Election Day, what we're really about is a public school. And that, one of the things that I've read recently that's really framed my discussions with the teachers, is that while we look at our special needs population, whether we're talking about our English language learners, or our special needs student, or our intellectually gifted students, they're not a burden to our system, but they actually teach us how to teach better. And if you look at the history of public education, if it weren't for those special groups, we wouldn't have things like EL classes. There were EL classes in the turn of the century, when we were doing, trying to acculturate the people who were coming through, through New York. There were classes at that time. School nurses are a part of our system now because of those days. And now funding, because the needs of these students are pushing a lot of lawsuits through the court, so that we have adequate funding in public education. So we've tried to turn the conversation around, and looked at the glass half-full, and what are these kids teaching us, so that we can strengthen the education in our instructional program for all of our students. There's a lot more in that site plan. It's 12:30, so I'm going to turn it back to you for questions, so that if you have anything specific about Roosevelt, I'll be happy to answer it.
Well, thank you very much. We'll go back to Ms. Harder, if you'd like to start?
Sure. Just reflecting back on, on all of the presentations that we've had, the state on their, I don't know if it's the state or the feds, smart goals. Why would we choose stupid goals? Maybe unreachable goals? I just, it struck me on the first thought, I mean, you know, unreachable goals would be okay, you know? Okay, I don't need to comment any further.
That's educators for you, right?
Wait, that edge is, edge is speak at its worst, you know? Let's choose some stupid goals or useless goals. But, but, everything that we've seen have been smart goals, and I want to applaud all of you for that. I think a lot of thought and time and effort has gone into these, and, you know, examination of a lot of data and discussion of individual students and that sort of thing. Just one question, and it's the same question that I, no, just the same question I put to Mr. Zukwitz. How do you, how do you coordinate, on one of your, the measures that you look at, on the means of evaluating, you use report cards? I mean, in addition to your standardized testing data and that sort of thing, tell me how you pull it all together. Let's just say, I'm looking at this, this was for English language learners.
Oh, just for the English language, for continuous?
No, you can choose, that's exactly right.
You know, it's a multi-pronged approach, and I think the grade level meetings are the key. The opportunity for teachers to meet with me and each other, and the focus of those grade level meetings are students. They have to give me the notes on that, and I don't want to see that they spend 25 minutes trying to decide the next field trip, or I don't want to be there for that. It's really about that. The other prong of it is, I do read all of the students' report cards, and I do that for, and I comment, I can't comment on 500, I haven't figured out how to do that yet, but I'll do the primaries, one marking period, the upper grade the next, and then all of them at the end, so I can prepare for the next year. The reason that I do that, and I have found it to be so potent, is because I can pull out and make notes while I'm reading it, it says shoe leather, too, from walking around, you can't always see it while you're watching a classroom going on. But that's the main tool that we have to communicate, not only with parents that year, but also with the next year's teacher. So although we have some, we want to improve that report card, that report card is, to me, a very critical piece, not only with the ones and the fours and the attendance, but also in the way the teacher describes the student in the comments. So we have the grade level meetings, the report cards, and all of the other formative assessments and summative assessments that you heard. We pull it together, because we often will highlight in our grade level meetings individual students. We also have a very active student study team, so that there's a lot of nets along the way to catch any kids that might fall through the cracks. Reading intervention, they're monitored every two, three months, they're assessed. We think we do a pretty good job with it. Any, any other clarifications on that?
No, no, just that I hope that at some point in the future, it'll be easy to put that kind of information together, you know, with the, the new students.
We're hoping that Aries, yeah, will be. Yeah, and one of the things with the, the reading intervention teacher, I told you, she's put graphs together for each EL learner, so that we can just flip through for them, it's make our, like our own report card, we can see graphically how their levels are increasing, for example, in reading and listening. So that if we see that their, that graph is not going up after two or three years, then we begin to look for something else. Are we not, is the student not picking up English language skills? Because there's something else going on, they're not, they've got other disabilities that they'd have, no matter what language they spoke.
Thanks.
Okay?
Oh, you know, I just had a, I actually don't have very many questions for you, I think we've kind of covered a lot of the things, as you said, previously. I had just a question, you were talking about, that you said you get about 20 new students per year, per grade, who, no, was that?
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry, or maybe not new, but 20 students per year, per grade, that are ELD, is that?
No, only, it's just last year and this year that we noticed it in kindergarten and 1st, so that our new kindergarten class of 80 kids, 20 of them are English language learners. Whereas if, when we back in the, and looked at the last five to seven years, it was typically at Roosevelt, only about 10 or 12. So we're seeing a little bit of an uptick.
Okay, okay, well then that, actually, that probably clarifies my question, because I think I misunderstood how you were, how you were meaning that, and I had a question about that. So you were commenting, but I think I understood that the, the point behind it is that you're having an increase in the number of ELD students.
Yes.
And you're, and that's challenging the school to sort of provide?
I don't know if it's, we've had to relook at who our, we couldn't just do business as usual. You know, we were doing a lot of English immersion, which was, you know, fine, but we were noticing that, you know, that, we knew that we had to handle it some other way, and of course, it was fortuitous that we have Suzanne or Dutro coming. I also looked to see what was going on there, and for kindergarten and 1st, a lot of it has to do with the inter-district transfer policy. So some of those students are not Roosevelt students, but apply to come there, and so we, you know, of course, we accept them, because we have seats. And some of them are from McKinley, they're from our schools, they're just from other schools, let's just leave it at that. So, and our seats are, I mean, we can have four kindergarten classes, we're part of the Santa Barbara School District, and so that's what we do. Not all of them, I don't mean to characterize it that way. Some of them are in our very own Roosevelt attendance area, but we did see an uptick that we didn't see before. We also think we're getting better at assisting parents in filling out the home language survey. Just like with the free and reduced lunch, some people don't want to, don't understand it, or don't fill it out accurately, so we can help their students. So they're, they think their children is a fluent English speaker, and so they put all English down, and then we find out after they get in there that that wasn't absolutely accurate. So we've had to get better at the registration and the screening of those registered students coming in. And just to answer your other comment about ELAC, I made a little note here. One of the things our site council does, is that our site council president sends out a meeting notice to the president or director or whatever of every one of our parent groups to attend our site council meetings. And they're a regular agenda item, so we get a report from PTA, or Educational Foundation Gate, ELAC, and I'm sure there's another one I can't think of right now. So we do that.
So, I mean, that's great, that sounds wonderful. So they send out the, the notice of the meetings, and representatives of those groups actually attend?
Hopefully. Usually, and if not, then I'll fill them in. You know, if the person can't be there, then I'll report on the last meeting we had and what the upgrade, but it's actually a regular agenda item for us reports from, and that's the way to get the input in, so that we can make our categorical allocations.
Well, that's a great idea, thank you for coming back to that question.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I don't have very much either.
Okay.
Your, does, is your population pretty stable, and it sounds like you're getting, you know, these kids from private schools at different points?
Yeah, I think we're about, maybe down about five students from last year, but we have, yeah, we have four kindergartens. And I probably could have done a fifth, but we just don't have the classroom, based on this number of students who had applied to come through in our inter-district transfers. We're also, one of the other things that we're also finding is, students who start at Roosevelt in the primary grades are becoming inter-district students because of the housing costs, they're moving, we have students that commute from Lompoc, Buellton, and San Yanez. So it's, rather than coming south-north, they're coming north-south, and their parents work here, so, and we have extended day with the REC program, and the early childhood has an after-school program, so we're seeing that, too. So because we provide that, they stay, or they ask to come, so our enrollment is steady, yes.
Going back to the report cards and looking at them, I'm sure that tells you a lot about the teachers as well. It's probably very.
How hard they work.
Yeah, yeah, or just even their style and so forth, I think that would be a wonderful way to sort of assess.
It is, and it also helps me to know the students better, so that I can walk out on the playground and say, "So how come we don't know our math facts?" You know, why, you know, Miss so-and-so commented that, you know, you need to work on those multiplication tables.
That's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Well, I think that, I think that brings us to the end of our presentations, and I want to again thank all of you who were presenting today, and all of your colleagues who presented previously. I know we kind of put you on the hot seat for a while, while you're here, and I also want to appreciate the fact that all of you stayed to support each other and to hear each other, because I think, I know, I teach, and I feel like I can learn so much from my colleagues, that it's always interesting to be able to hear what other people are doing. So I want to appreciate the time that you've given up to be here for the full presentations, as well as your own. And I think that brings us to Item C1, where we get to approve these.
Can I make a?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the single plans for student achievement by elementary schools for Adams, Cleveland, Franklin, Harding, McKinley, Monroe, Open Alternative, Roosevelt, and Santa Barbara Community Academy.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 3-0 with two absences. There you go. Thank you very much, and we will look forward to doing this again next year.